Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, August 14, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Leaks May.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Mayor Potempiana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I actually, an amendment to the agenda, I ask that we add County Commissioner Helene Zack in the presentation, under Presentation C.
Right. Well, add her as C. Thank you. Any other discussion on the agenda?
Support.
All right. We moved him, supported. Any discussion? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
House Members Leaks May.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Yana. Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adapted. So moving on to presentations, and our first presentation is the Unit Commendation Awards. And Chief Collins and Captain Palazzolo are here to present those. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Your Honor. Your Honor and Council, we have three different awards we'd like to present this evening. The first one is for Officer Chris Wyczek. Chris, this incident occurred on June 9, 2017. Ferndale cars were dispatched to an address on Albany Street regarding narcotics overdose. Upon arrival, officers discovered an unresponsive 25-year-old male in the backyard. He was unconscious and not breathing. Officer Wyczek assisted by other officers in performing chest compressions, and the result of Officer Wyczek's quick actions and knowledge of first responder techniques, the man began breathing on his own and regained consciousness without the use of Narcan. This is a life-saving award for Officer Chris Wyczek. Next, I'd like to call forward Officer Lance Walker and Officer Amanda Samansky. This incident occurred on June 23 of this year at approximately 11:50 in the evening. Officer Samansky and Officer Walker were dispatched to an unresponsive woman inside a parked vehicle on Pearson near Central. Upon their arrival, they found the woman was unconscious and not breathing. The officer removed the woman from her vehicle and administered first aid, including Narcan. The woman responded to the Narcan and regained consciousness. Their subsequent investigation revealed that the woman had overdosed on several different medications. Ferndale Fire arrived and transported the woman to William Beaumont Hospital for further treatment. Due to their quick actions, the opioid-related overdose death was avoided. These are also life-saving awards. Due to a few vacations, not everybody here that was receiving this award is present, but I'd like to call forward Lieutenant Emmy, Sergeant Andre, Officer Pierce, Officer Heath, and Dispatcher Fields. Officer Lemke could not be here tonight. Detective Goble could not be here tonight. And Lieutenant Kenyon from the Madison Heights Police Department could not be here tonight, but we will also honor them. This incident occurred on July 21, 2017, at about 11:30 in the morning. Dispatcher Field received a call from a woman who had stated that her husband was intending to kill himself at a residence on Leach Street. Sergeant Andre and Officer Lemke were dispatched to the residence. They found a suicidal suspect, a U.S. Navy veteran, in the attached garage and asked him to step outside. The subject retreated into the house and barricaded himself. He had a rope tied around his neck and was clearly armed with a large kitchen knife. Sergeant Andre relayed this information to dispatch. Detective Goble, Officer Heath, Officer Pierce, and others were dispatched to the scene to assist. Lieutenant Emmy responded to the scene and assumed the role of incident commander. Sergeant Andre, Officer Lemke, Officer Pierce, Detective Goble, and Lieutenant Kenyon from the Madison Heights Police Department, and Lieutenant Emmy took positions in two response teams. Dispatcher Fields continued assisting with the intelligence gathering at dispatch. Officer Pierce performed admirably when he was thrust into the position of negotiator. He quickly developed a rapport with the subject based on their prior military experience. A team comprised of Sergeant Andre, Officer Pierce, and Officer Lemke provided the subject with cigarettes through a kitchen window after the subject removed the screen. Sergeant Andre's team, with the addition of Lieutenant Kenyon, opened the garage door to gain a tactical advantage. Another team comprised of Officer Lemke, Detective Goble, and Lieutenant Emmy opened the front door of the residence with the key provided by the wife. The subject became very agitated and started screaming at Lieutenant Emmy's team not to enter the house while threatening the officers with a knife. Sergeant Andre's team recognized a window of opportunity to end the standoff while the subject was engaged with Lieutenant Emmy's team. Sergeant Andre's team requested that Lieutenant Emmy's team continue to distract the subject while they moved into a position to deploy a taser through the open kitchen window. While standing on a chair under the kitchen window, Lieutenant Kenyon effectively deployed his taser at the suicidal subject. The subject fell to the ground and dropped the knife. Lieutenant Emmy's team, along with Officer Heath, quickly moved in and placed the subject into protective custody, and he was subsequently transported to an area hospital for psychological evaluation. During this two-hour standoff, these officers acted professionally, exhibited compassion and restraint, and worked together as a cohesive unit to safely resolve this very dangerous situation. Each one is receiving the unit commendation.
Thank you. Our next presentation is Introduction to the City's New Website, and Kara, our Communications and Community Engagement Officer, will introduce that.
Hello. I won't get a life-saving award for this, but I'm still really happy to present it. We should have done a drumroll, or I thought about bringing like a little green and white pom-pom or something, but I'm thrilled to announce that we have officially launched the city's new website, same URL, www.ferndalem.gov. This is kind of, it was already a planned, I think, five-year, Joe, am I saying that right? Yes, every five years to completely look at the content, look at the design, look at how functional it is for all of our audiences, and come up with a new game plan. So this site looks pretty different than what we've had in the past. It also looks different than what a lot of other communities use, and that's because it was made by a different kind of group. It was actually designed by Seamless Gov. It's the organization that we have used for a couple of years now to transform all of our flat forms and PDFs into digital online experiences. Residents can fill them out online, submit online, much more customer service friendly. So they've kind of long been considered the leaders in forms and form experiences, and then they decided to shift their focus to the face of government and started getting into municipal web design. When we heard that, we decided to research it, and we found that it was going to be the perfect fit for us. So this is it. I'm going to keep it kind of short and sweet. It's already been up for a few weeks, so many people have probably already engaged with it a little bit. I'm going to do a quick run-through of some of the key pieces. This right here is our new homepage, and all the content that was here before that people have looked for is still here. It might just be in a different, hopefully more easy-to-locate place. The homepage is meant to be kind of a one-stop-shop for all of the main pieces of information that people are looking for. So we've got important announcements here on the top. We've got a search bar. I'll do that later. We've got common requests. These are the things that when our people are answering the phones all day, every day, where are meeting minutes, where can I go to pay my water bill, pay my taxes, here they are. So we can send people right to the homepage, and they can get the pieces that they need most. There was a lot of research by Seamless Gov. put into this. They don't design this for us, and they don't design it for an average public. They design it based on how our audience has been using our site for the past year, what they're clicking on, how often they're clicking on it, and where they're going to find it. So that's that. We also have a good little announcement spot here, so that if we've got something of key importance, we can make sure it gets seen. We've got a great, clear news and event section now with our top news right up front. This is considered kind of a section that can change out. So in the summer, recreation is one of our most accessed topics. Perhaps in the fall, it'll be leaf pickup. In the winter, it'll be snow, and that can change out depending on the season. And then we've got a feature here where we have councils' most important projects and initiatives that people can learn more about. And that is pretty much it. Last thing on the page here is our FAQ section, so people can hit the knowledge base and search for whatever they might be interested in. Couple more things. So the search, we are thrilled that we have a great functional search feature on this website. It's very rigorous. It searches just like Google, so if you were to put in, like we have, Mayor Coulter...
Uh-oh.
We don't just get the main page with your name on it. We actually get information about performing marriage ceremonies. We get information about the mayor's business district. So that's great. That means that people who are here searching and don't know exactly what they're looking for, how to find it, are going to have a much easier time getting there. And then just to point...
I'm sure that'll be a popular feature.
Our number-one search.
Yeah. Party blocked it.
And then along the top navigation here, I just want to point out Services, which is where most of the information for residents and business owners is going to live. It's organized by tab, so if you're interested in anything, building, code enforcement, all of our parks and recreation, including a Parks Directory, all of the many things we offer for business, guides, inspections, again, code enforcement, police and fire under safety, and then common pieces that residents may be looking for, followed obviously by public works. That can all be found under Services. The only other kind of key information not found under Services is City Council and elections, and that's under Government. And then finally, we have this Pay and Apply page, which puts all of our most common transactions, anything people might need to access, in order of how frequently they're hitting that.
That's awesome.
So, and then we have a full directory for all staff. So that's just kind of a quick once-over of the site. I wanted to kind of let everybody know what they can find on there. Obviously, if anybody's interested in seeing the site in very close detail, I'd be happy to meet with them and do that. There are still glitches here and there. There's also still areas you might find information that isn't fully flushed out, and if that's the case, I invite people to contact me by email at ksookol@ferndalem.gov, and I would be happy to make sure that we get that fixed up. In the meantime, are there any questions?
Is there a feedback section, so in case they can figure out how to spell your name, they can just click on it?
Yes, actually throughout the website. So on our council page, there's a place where we can contact any of the council members. On every department page, there is a feedback form on those pages, so it will go not only right to that department, but also to the website admins, so that we can ensure that it's being addressed.
Nice. When do you expect it to go live?
It's live.
Oh, it's live now?
It's live. Yep, it's up there. Everybody can use it, and it's actually been live for three weeks. It's considered a soft launch, so we can work out some of the kinks, but it's up and going, and we're getting good feedback so far.
Excellent. Any other questions? It looks great, and look forward to using it.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara. Appreciate it. Excellent. All right. County Commissioner Helene Zack snuck in on us this evening.
Thank you for adding me to the agenda.
Always good to see you.
It's nice to be here. So we are still working on our DNA lab for Oakland County, and I do, it's almost totally live. This is a wonderful new county service. Historically, we have had to send all of our crime work to the state of Michigan, and there can be a lag up to six months to get information. So Oakland County has invested in this whole lab process. It is accredited. The one last piece of the puzzle is Oakland County still can't enter our numbers into the federal system. I'm told in a month or two that should happen, and I will let you know, but it's really a great service that our different courts and law enforcement can use. I see that there is a CDBG amendment, so the Oakland County is adding additional funding, excuse me, to a one-time funding in CDBG. And what's going to happen is instead of us using it in home repair funds, we are giving it back to the communities by formula. So I think it's about $30,000, $40,000 more dollars coming to Ferndale, and every penny counts, and you can use it. But at the same time, this is a one-time only. We don't know what the future of this funding will be.
Right.
Next, Oakland County is going to be offering this VerTrak video training for public safety and opening it up to the local departments as well. We are purchasing new software, which is like virtual reality active shooting training, so that you are in the immediate practice area, and I do hope, have they offered it to you? And I think it's the state-of-the-art training, so I'm glad that Oakland County's doing it. There's also an interesting new thing coming through our Public Health Department, which is mapping the opioid crisis, and thank you for all the public safety initiatives. It's wonderful, also awful that we have so many. So this mapping initiative is trying to plot it, to look at strategy, and how do we address it more systematically through our public health. We are very close to opening up our Animal Care Center, and for animal activists, I'm really excited. I'm going on a tour in a couple of weeks to see the new Animal Care Center. We took a very archaic, funky, old building that was off-site next to a trustee camp, and we're going to sell that property, and we've built a new building, which is part of the Oakland County complex, so that it's easier access. We have employees coming in and walking dogs, other volunteers, because it will be closer. So we're really excited about having this new facility, state-of-the-art. And I worked really, it was a really hard advocacy issue to get better quality care for the animals. We also coming to the cities, villages, and townships, there will be free GIS system offered to all the communities starting in October, and hopefully you've gotten communication about it, and you'll be trained on how to use it more effectively. Finally, there is an initiative led by, throughout the state, to examine our public mental health system again, and there's two different representatives that are spearheading it, one of them being Clint Kesto, where they are doing a dog and pony show, and they are coming to Oakland County in two weeks, and I am going to be part of the presenting panel, talking about some of the initiatives and also talking about some of the challenges for our community mental health and substance abuse system in Oakland County.
Excellent.
That's it. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioner Zack.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Thank you. Thanks. Good to see you. All right. That concludes our presentations this evening. We'll move on now to public hearings, and we have four public hearings scheduled this evening. The first one...
Do we have a call to the audience?
Oh, thank you. I skipped Call to Audience. Uh-oh. Pardon me. Thank you very much. Yes, Call to Audience comes before a public hearing, and this is your opportunity, if you're here with us in person, to come and address council on any issue that you would like that's not on the agenda, because you'll get an opportunity to speak on that when we get to that part of the agenda. Yes, sir?
No.
Oh. Oh, so you can just kind of make your way to the podium, come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours to speak on any issue that's not on the agenda. Good evening, sir.
I'm Earl Sparkman. I live at 3341 Grayson. I've been a proud resident of Ferndale, I believe, for 54 years. I would not even begin to tell you that we've always agreed with everything you did, but we've got past ones that we didn't agree with.
All right.
But I come home the other day, and I was very pleasantly surprised to find that they were doing some work in the Harding Park just behind my house.
Yeah.
And that frankly scared me a little bit, because the first time I'd ever had a problem was when I moved in there 54 years ago, and I found that they were scheduling that for development of private homes in there. It obviously is not back to that, and I just wanted to tell you how happy that I am to succeed the job, and I really don't know who I should thank for this, so I'm going to thank all of you. I think you've done a wonderful job. I've walked on that area already out there, while I walked on it the first day it had opened, and it was really wonderful, and I want to thank you all very much for considering something that will be beneficial to the members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And it was installed by our DPW department, so they are to be commended for that. Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matt Flynn. This is Adam O'Connor with Ultimate Fund Productions at 23315 Woodward Avenue, and we'd like to thank everybody for allowing us to bring brews, barbecue, and bourbon into Ferndale earlier this summer. Things went well. There wasn't any issues with the police, with the fire. We worked well with the fire department as well as the police department. We did have a little bit of a cleanup issue with some grease, but we got with Michael and Rocky, and they pointed out where, and I hired a company to come in and repowerwash all the sidewalks and the streets to get that cleaned up. But we wanted to come in and talk about some donations that we've given to some charities from that event.
Excellent.
Some of them are here, some of them are not here. One was to $1,000, went to Community Health and Social Services. It's a group based out of, for inner-city, to help out the inner-city in Detroit. We also gave $5,800 to Chaos, which Chaos stands for children, academics, and sports. So it's a group, it's an organization that's all throughout the county. There's members that are from here, from Ferndale and all over, but their basic goal is to either keep kids both in academics and sports, to keep them out of trouble.
Yep.
Initially, we gave, I don't have the big check, but the artist, mint artist, what's her name? I forget her name, but we gave them $1,000 to help out with their youth art program. We're waiting to get back with the Ferndale art to help. I guess they're looking for donations to help paint some electrical panel boxes and different things in the city, so we're waiting on that to donate some money. We initially gave $350 to the Ferndale Community Band, but today we're giving them another 150, I think. There's some gentlemen's here to pick that up.
Excellent.
And then we had a little bit of extra money, so we're going to give $1,000 to the Ferndale Community Foundation.
Thank you.
So if anybody's here that can accept for the Ferndale Community Foundation...
Lots of hands go up.
Be happy to.
I'm the treasurer. I'll be happy to.
And the president. You guys can both go.
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll get it. Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you come back here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, thank you, and we look to give away more donations to charities in the area, and if you guys have suggestions of where they would need it for when we do Oktoberfest and future events that we do in the city.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. All right. Anyone else that would like to address council? Yeah. Make your way to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Don Levin, and I live at 456 West Drayton in Ferndale. I wanted to invite everyone to an event that's being sponsored by the Ferndale Area District Library and the Ferndale Historical Society. On Thursday, September 14, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., there's going to be a talk called "An Evening of Ferndale History and Mystery." Gary Taylor, who is the president of the Ferndale Historical Society and the Ferndale Historical Museum, is going to give a talk about the historical account of the Ostrender Building Fire, which, as you may know, was the worst fire in Ferndale's history. In 1975, it took out half of the block on north of Nine Mile Road. So he's going to talk about that, and then I am a local author, and I've written a book called "The Forgotten Child," which is a mystery set in Ferndale. It's one of the fourth mystery in the series set in Ferndale, and I use that fire as part of the novel. So I'm going to talk about how I fictionalized this historical fire, so we'll get the facts and we'll get the fiction about it. It's, I'll read from the novel, and I'll have books for sale also, if anyone is interested. It's free. It's open to the public. Light refreshments will be served, and again, it's Thursday, September 14, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you may see these posters, flyers around town. That's what this refers to. It's flyers for the event. Thank you. Hope everyone can make it.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
It's at the library.
If I may, through the chair, I'm going to do a shameless plug, because Mr. Levin's a resident, and he writes excellent books based in Ferndale, and it's a treat not only to read the books, but to have the local setting involved is really, makes it a lot of fun. So even if you can't make the event, I'd encourage you to check out his books. So you're welcome.
Michael.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
I'm guessing by your T-shirt that you're going to talk about the Dream Cruise.
We've just got a little event coming up.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make a few announcements about this weekend's 23rd Annual Woodward Dream Cruise. The 2017 Ferndale Dream Cruise activities that we have planned for Thursday, August 17, is the second annual Dream Cruise Roadshow that is filmed live for the PBS Detroit Television. We also will have, on the same day, we'll have monster trucks on display for the kids to enjoy. They're not to drive on or drive in, they're just there for the appeal of how huge these tires are, which are massive. On Friday, we have Mel's... On Friday, we have Mel's TV and Movie Car Collection, which is an exhibit of 20 different cars from television shows and movies from the past, such as like the Batmobile, the Munsters, which I know you like the Munsters. I'm sorry, Eddie's not going to be here this year.
Oh, that was fun.
On Friday, of course, we have the 17th Annual Ferndale Emergency Vehicle Show, the official Woodward Dream Cruise ribbon-cutting ceremony at 5:00, and the Lights and Sirens Cruise at 5:30. And then on Saturday, we have the Mustang Alley, which is, by the way, the largest car show during the Woodward Dream Cruise with over 750 Mustangs on Nine Mile Road. And of course, our very popular crowd-pleasing rock and live entertainment stage will be taking place on West Nine Mile, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. All the specific information, such as the schedule of the bands that are performing, is online at FerndaleDreamCruise.com. And of course, we do have the official Woodward Dream Cruise merchandise available here at City Hall. It will also be available on Friday and Saturday during the Dream Cruise on East Nine Mile by Oakland, or by Oakland, by Woodward Avenue behind the Como's Pizzeria. So, thank you.
We look forward to it. Thank you. This Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Excellent. All right, anyone else from the audience that would like to address council this evening? All right. See, now we will move on to the public hearings, and we have four public hearings this evening, and the first one is a public hearing on 427 Allen Street, formerly the Taft School, rezoning special land use and planned use development project, and Jordan Torty, our Director of Economic Development, will introduce that item.
Mayor, Council, everyone in the audience, how you all doing tonight? Thank you for having me up here. As the mayor said, I would like to introduce the plan unit development application for the Taft site, but I'll also just give an overview, because Taft sort of has the local government sampler platter on the agenda this evening in terms of a lot of different steps to go through this project. The next item that you'll be reviewing is the brownfield plan and reimbursement agreement that would only be considered if this item passes. So it's sort of just an order of operations thing, but in general, the plan unit development is a process, it's actually, and April, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe it's our first plan unit development in the city. So it's an item that we've had an ordinance on the books for, but it's the first, first project that has gone through this process. And so essentially, what the project is, again, is at 427 Allen Street, is most recently owned by Ferndale Schools and used as the former Taft School. So Robertson Brothers Homes was awarded the site, and the Wilson School site, which was previously approved by council, after having the most qualifying bid and a formal request for proposals by the schools in 2016. So this proposal's been through several public meetings, so three in the neighborhoods, four with the planning commission over the past two years, each resulting in revisions to the overall proposed plan. So I won't read through the whole package here, but essentially, what a plan unit development allows you to do, when there are multiple elements of a project that conflict with the underlying zoning, and you may not necessarily want to rezone, or rezoning itself isn't sufficient, plan unit development is a way to account for all of that in one streamlined process. So what essentially this plan will do, will create 72 townhomes on the site of the former Taft School with some pedestrian pathways, some on-street parking on Gardendale and Allen, and some other items that are obviously detailed in your packet, but I can provide some context on those if you have questions, or anybody in the public does as well, but we also have the developers on hand from Robertson Brothers Homes to provide that context as well. So teeing it up, that's essentially what's before you tonight, is their application for the plan unit development. This was approved by the planning commission on June 21st, and you are the next step on the train.
All right. So with that, the first thing we need to do is open it up for public comment, and so I will open the public hearing, and I will ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening on this plan unit development proposal. And if so, come on up, give us your name, same deal, three minutes is yours, give us your name and address, and...
I just know where I live and pick at my house, right?
And let me just say, if you're not comfortable giving your address, you can just leave it for the clerk.
No, it's fine. I'm Janet Lawless. I live on Alberta Street, so luckily, I'm not going to be too crowded. I just, a couple of questions and a couple of concerns. I realize Robertson Brothers have put a lot of work into this, and have modified their plans and trying to accommodate the city and residents' concerns, but that's what they sort of agreed to do when they started this process, so that's, they have done a nice job of that, so that has been appreciated. I'm just wondering in general about all this development in Ferndale, and driving down Nine Mile just to get here to the city council meeting was crazy. You know, are you prepared, is the infrastructure, the road system in Ferndale prepared for the construction on Plantavon, the construction on Livenoy, the construction now on Allen? Are you going to divert the things, or is there going to be, you know, blocked off, you know, sections of Nine Mile in the central business district? Because it's hectic now, and it's, it's going to, it could lead to more accidents, people not even wanting to go down Nine Mile driving, you know, is the parking going to be consistent with all these developments that are occurring? Is this really, is this part of your planning and development, or is this part of your overall city planning process? So that's a concern. Okay. I mean, I grew up in the country, so I like, you know, a little space and a little greenery and a little green space, and I think we all have this, like, it hurts me to drive by, you know, to walk down by Garbit Park and the Ball Field, which I think is an essential part of the entire park, and also see that beautiful building, which, you know, has been acknowledged by you, Mr. Coulter yourself, that it's a beautiful building, it's viable, and my concern is that it's just being knocked down because it's not financially as lucrative as townhouses and condos. Okay? So, and also, like, I've lived out west in Portland for several years, and there's the city, one of their essential priorities was to maintain green spaces in the city, and I don't see that happening in Ferndale. I see it just becoming, you know, Royal Oak, you know, Royal Oak's more fancy little brother, little sister, what have you, right? You know, it's sub-Royal Oak now. So that's, it's just, for a city that claims to be as different, alternative and creative and green, it's a disappointment. So, and also like the notice process, you know, I'm part of the Dales Neighborhood Association, and we've been, we've been coordinating on our response to this, and the city, Blake Pruitt contacted our lead at that time, Everett Kaiser, and he just contacted a small group of residents, like 10 people, it tasted, at Easy Lake Sunday, and I felt like, what is notice in the city? Was notice completely done? You know, were flyers passed out to all the, to the entire city, or to the Dales Neighborhood? Or were emails sent out to people who've been active in the city and would be generally, you know, directly affected by this construction? And were lay conservancy projects considered at the beginning? You know, I know that you mentioned before that the parks in Ferndale considered it, and I realize it's an expensive piece of property, which, you know, which is a good thing for Ferndale, shows that we're really, you know, growing and prospering, and our property failures are going up, but did you, you know, did you consider the nature of conservancy or other, or Michigan State has conservancy projects, like Garbit Park, I know just on the south side is protected by some kind of conservancy agency at some point, and so were those options explored before you even went into like, develop, 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 you know, or if it isn't even development? You know, the whole word now is kind of thrown into question for me right now. Like commitments to historical buildings, you know, we have a gentleman here speaking about the history of Ferndale, and right, and this commission, this city council right now is talking about destroying history. You know, if you walk by the park like I do every day with my dog, or watch people fly in their kites, or watch sports teams playing and taking pictures and enjoying that space, that history is now being altered drastically. Okay? I realize...
And you're at three minutes, so if you could...
Okay, all right. I just think it's important for these things to be mentioned. I realize, you know, that we're at a certain point, I appreciate that, but I think these concerns should be mentioned and should be respected, and should, and many residents of the Dales, as you'll see, have initially opposed the project, so there's other, so that's my, that's my input and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gabrielle Pujadlo. I'm at 311 Gardendale, right across from the park, which I bought my house because I love that park, and I was just watching the tiny Ferndale Eagles football team practice in the baseball diamond right before we came here, and it's really sweet, and kind of makes the whole neighborhood feel like watching the kids play across the park, so it's kind of a bummer to find out that there's going to be 72 condos there instead. But, I mean, I work for a developer, actually, so I know how difficult this process is, listening to a bunch of people who live around your development who don't want to see their park go away, which I'm, I'm sorry about that. Feel like a little bit of a hypocrite, but I have two questions. I mean, I know that the development is going to happen, and at this stage, that there's no changing that, but I do know that changes are possible at any stage in a development. And so my first question is about the trees, because they were here before most of us. And the mature, the mature trees in the Ferndale neighborhood, I think, are one of our greatest assets, and I know that those are right on the border of the development, and I, I think that with some very small changes, they could probably be spared. And my second question is about parking permits for the people who live on the park, because right now already, parking is a huge issue for us. There's a lot of illegal parking on both sides of the street, which makes it actually really hard to drive down the street or pull out of your driveway, a lot of people park in front of our driveways, and so I want to know how we can go ahead and have guests over to our homes when there are 70 few people who are going to be parking their cars on the street, and I mean, they have every right to do so, I guess, if they live in those condos, but I feel like it's poor planning on the developer's part to not plan for more parking as part of their development, because they have a big piece of land to do that with. So...
So Jordan, maybe I, if you don't mind, can I ask you to address, you know, the specific questions about trees, because I know those were part of the discussion, and then maybe we could take up parking after that.
Absolutely. So on the trees, the proposed plan is projected to effect, and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, but about 13 old growth trees, and so we've been in contact with their development folks, their, their construction crews, bringing in the Parks Department and DPW, so Lloyd to the rescue again, in terms of evaluating those 13 trees, and any of them that can survive the transport process will be transported either to Garbit Park or to another nearby park. So we have DPW, CED, the developers, working together on those trees. And as far as parking, as part of the community engagement process, the developers are required to have two spaces per dwelling unit, which exceeds the current ordinance. In addition, they're also providing inset parking on Gardendale and Allen, so 10 spaces per side, so they're required to house within their development enough parking for the folks that live there, plus guests. I mean, our parking ordinance is written to accommodate, to account for that kind of traffic, both the folks that live there and the folks that will visit, but also the inset parking, which doesn't sort of help them satisfy that requirement, is sort of an added benefit of the PUD process. It was something that we were able to prioritize because of the nature of a PUD. So that on-street, on-street parking will help ensure some public access parking for Garbit Park, because that lot that's currently at the school property is going to go away as part of the project, and that'll also provide some traffic calming. It being an inset parking lane, it does not change the width of the road, but it provides that parking by taking that, that land outside of the school property.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to clarify for folks watching at home and those that are here, because both the first two speakers mentioned this, we do have a policy not to develop parkland in Ferndale. So I realize you're calling the Ball Diamond a park, I just want to distinguish that the Ball Diamond is part of the school property or former school property. We do have a very strict policy not to develop the city-owned green space that we, that we own, and we've never done that, to my knowledge. So I just, I want to distinguish, and I understand it's a ballpark, so it looks like, you know, part of the city park, but just to distinguish between those two, because we would not, we are not, and we would not develop city land, city paraplan.
That's correct, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, and so with that, anyone else that would like to address council? Come on up, yeah. You've been waiting. How are you?
Good, hi. My name is Michael Palazola. I live at 335 Gardendale Street, across from the baseball diamond, and lived there for 20 years, and I love the Dales, and I love, you know, people say, oh, you live right off of Eight Mile, it's so, must be so crazy, but no, it's actually kind of quiet, and you know, it gets a little hectic on Saturdays when the park's being used, but that's, you know, that's usually summertime, and it's fun, because it just reminds me of summer, it's the sounds of summer. But, you know, this, I've seen it when it was elementary school, and then went to the digital learning center, and I've been to every single, there were some security concerns, I've been to every single meeting that they've ever had on that parcel, and recently, you know, in the last couple of years, Blake, the former, I think he's former superintendent, he had us meet, there was only about 10 of us, and was telling us, you know, some things were going to go on there, and a lot of us had concerns, and none of us knew that the baseball diamond was owned by the city at the time, I mean, by the schools at the time. So went through all this process, he started, the developer came up with like 109 units originally, and, you know, we kept, you know, bringing our, all the things that we were at issues with, and then, you know, they talked about changing the zoning from R1 to R2 to R3, jumping from R1 to R3, which isn't really supposed to be done, but with this P, I'm just wondering why we're so lucky that we get to be the test strip for the, this PUD, you know? But the, one of the meetings that we were called to go to, there was like five of us there, and there was all these people that were all for it, and saying, oh, this sounds great, at 90 units, because they dropped it down to 90 units, and we were like, looking around, like, where's our neighbors, you know? And so my wife and I walked around the neighborhood and went to every single house, touching the park and development there on Allen, Fielding and Gardendale Street, and a lot of them didn't know, you know, what was going on, they said they heard some things about it, and we started a petition, and everyone, I got signatures from everyone that lived in all those parcels along there and more, one Ferndale police officer, city employee, but I have 76 signatures from those residents, and everyone was opposed to going from R1 to R3, which is, we're at 72 units. Wilson School gets to have, you know, single-family homes, you know, no one showed up at any of the planning commission meetings for that, because it's, because that's marvelous, everyone, you know, wants something like that, but we get this high-density, 30-foot-high development that's going to block up the sun till noon on my side of the street, and then the parking is going to be horrendous. Just this week, when we were walking down handing out flyers, and there was people illegally parked on the park side of the street, and there was this roadster that came down the street, and a lady had her door open and smashed the door back, because the road isn't really made for parking on both sides of the street, so I just think there's going to be more of that. A lot of people were upset about the old-growth trees, I mean, those are huge old-growth trees that are not going to be moved, that's for sure. And this feels like they're putting this island of Royal Oak development that you see in downtown Royal Oak in the middle of our little neighborhood. You know, we have 20 homes on each side on Gardendale and Allen Street, and they're going to put 72 units right smack in the middle, and it's just going to be this island of mass, wall of buildings. I know they're trying to make, spruce it up and make it look really nice and everything, and I appreciate that, but I think just a lot of us feel like we've been kind of pushed around in our neighborhood, and everyone's telling us what's best for our little neighborhood that we love, and we, so I don't know if anyone would like...
Yeah, you can leave those with the clerk if you like. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I actually have enough for everyone.
Oh, okay. Thanks. All right. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? My name is Dennis Nolte, also at 311 Gardendale Street. Interesting moment for us in the Dales. I've been to more city council meetings in Ferndale than anywhere I've lived, on both coasts, because it's, you know, normally, you know, small-town government, there's not much to think about, you know, as long as your street is plowed, and I think Lloyd is the town facility supervisor. Fantastic.
Lloyd, right there.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's Lloyd right there.
Totally, he's fed, loving to death.
Us too.
So it's an interesting moment. I think when there was the city planning commission, one of the biggest things, what Mike has talked about, is why we moved to the Dales. You know, it's not, it's because this development doesn't exist there. You know, I was looking at the great new beautiful website, which is fantastic. So you have a picture of that building, probably in front of you or in an email someplace, is that something that's going to make the website? Is that something you're going to show the world and say, this is Ferndale, come move here, open up business here, look at this building? I don't think so. You know, I think, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the development business like, I don't know what the construction business is like. I know that I... I know that I wouldn't move to a town. I certainly didn't move to Ferndale because of that building. I told the Planning Commission I moved here 10 years ago and I picked Ferndale because there was so little of that. Downtown was beautiful and it's vibrant and thriving and different and friendly and it's big and small and it's all these unique things. You know, I, me and my wife are both wrestling with, do we stay, add onto our house, develop, really set down roots in Ferndale? A 72-unit condo, that's not roots, that's transitory. There's people coming in, living a few years, then moving to the Royal Oaks, then moving to the Birminghams, then moving to downtown Detroit. So I guess if I could just have one plea for you folks, I get it, it has to be developed, it's land, you know, maybe make the hard decision, keep it a green space, do something crazy, you know? Or think about the residents that are there, think about what, you know, is that Ferndale? Is that where Ferndale is heading in the future? I guess that's it, you know? Just a little old me on Gardendale Street. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Drew Slager. I live at 573 Gardendale. And I basically wanted to echo those concerns. I think the main issue is the density. Parking is extremely overburdened there already. Traffic at certain times of day, certain times of the weekend certainly is overburdened, I would say especially on Gardendale, but undoubtedly on Allen as well. And this is just a, it's an enormous footprint. If you get this wrong and if it affects the neighborhood in many of the ways that people are concerned that it will, there's no going back. That is one giant piece of land that is going to, you know, have this major, major change to the community in place and it can't be undone. One other concern I have is that I think it's really going to isolate the park there even, I mean, to some degree it can feel that way already, but that park is really going to be completely set off and feel completely separate from most of the community. Certainly, everybody north of Alberta is no longer going to feel like that's, you know, within their public space. It's going to be physically cut off and I think that's going to affect the way it's used and the quality of it in general. But it just seems as though this project can succeed for the developers, it can succeed for the neighborhood, it can succeed for the city if it's done at lower density. It feels as though the developers basically knew that this, these arguments, these complaints were going to come, shot for a very high number, knowing they were going to get cut down and cut down some, and we're still at a number that just frankly is not viable and should not be implemented in that space, in that neighborhood. It is going to change a lot of things day-to-day in ways that seriously affect quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. One more, Jordan. Yeah? Good evening.
Hi. My name's John Pracopass. I live at 321 Flowerdale Street. This is my first time at the council meeting.
A welcome.
And the reason is because it's also the first time I heard about this development and what was happening in my neighborhood. I've been living in Ferndale for almost 10 years now and what I love about this town is, let me say, I grew up in Westland where every subdivision looks exactly like the same across, you know, the major street, you know, everything was kind of stamped out in like the 50s and 60s. And what I love about this place is when you take your dog for a walk, everything's different, you know? There's a uniqueness in our neighborhood that you don't see in other places and you won't see in any other places that are now being built or developed. And I think that that's what a development like this with 72 condos will destroy. It will be so completely out of space, place in that area, you will change the nature of our neighborhood forever. I know that it will be a lot more lucrative to sell 72 homes than it would to sell, I think, what is it, 36 can be built there in four acres or something like that if it stays, single-family homes. But I don't believe that it's worth it for our community, especially our neighbors. And I feel very concerned that this has been in the works, in the talks for several years now, I understand, two years, and I've only just heard about it here near the end of the process. But that's why I came out tonight, because I wanted to put in my two cents. It's not just the people on Gardendale who are going to be immediately affected every day, but it's the people who live in that neighborhood, walk around and love the quiet little space and heaven that they have. I have a tiny house, it was built in 1939 with little closets. My kitchen doesn't have a dishwasher because we can't fit it in. We talk about what we could do and we always come back to, we cannot leave. This is our home and we love it here. And I just feel like this development will be detrimental to that and hopefully it won't make me love it less, but I'm afraid that that's what's going to happen.
Thank you.
It's me again.
Yes.
No, it's nice to see everybody listening and taking into all this account. Do you guys actually answer the questions, like what tax benefits?
So we don't, this is your, the public's opportunity, but we will, when your, the public portion is over, then council will have a discussion?
Okay, okay. Like what are the tax benefits for the city and is the money going towards the school system? I would assume that since it's school property, it's going to the school system, which is something that will relieve all of our growing pains and concerns about major, you know, this is like a major identity shift for Ferndale, I think, and that's what's, that's what's happening. And like, we feel like the identity of Ferndale is being sort of clustered among a group of city council members and their connections without really thinking about what Ferndale, you know, what has Ferndale been and what, and what does the whole city, what does like the residents want? And I think it's clear that the Dales residents really don't want this. But if, you guys can talk about tax, tax benefits, money going towards the school system that might help ameliorate some of these concerns.
I'll have them address that, yeah.
And then what about these old-growth trees? What's the rate of survival of trees that are actually transported like this and yanked out and transported elsewhere? Can Jason Tardy or maybe the DPW director answer that question? And what about infrastructure? Nine Mile, it's enough, I'm starting, I didn't start thinking about moving away to somewhere less dense than, until this, until all this development has really sort of reached a few-year pitch. So that is something that you have to concern is you have long-term residents here that moved here for, with a certain definition, a certain notion of Ferndale, and now that's changing drastically, quickly, okay? And that's it, just those are the last concerns, so.
Anyone else like to address council during the public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing and now I will open it up to staff and council. And Jordan, if there's any of those questions you want to take before we get started in that conversation?
Sure. Some of those that I remember, for example, there was the concern about the density in the R1 to R3. Just to clarify, this will remain as an R1 district. The underlying zoning will remain in R1. And essentially what had happened is the petition that was referenced, there were, you know, 76-plus signatures from the residents there who had called for a density of 66 units. And if you kind of look in your packet, you'll see sort of the highlights of that discussion were essentially to, the residents were calling for sort of a cap at 66 units. That was discussed at the Planning Commission. And then when it came back to the June 21st meeting, essentially the compromise position was 72 units in that that was a minimum number that allowed the inclusion of the public amenities to remain. So there was also a conversation about this development sort of limiting access or cutting off the access to the park. One of the biggest sort of priority pieces of shaping this development together was preserving, actually creating north-south and east-west pedestrian, publicly accessible pathways throughout the development. So there are two that run north and south that you can call them any number of different things, pathways, mews, I've heard different phrases, but the bottom line is there's sort of green, green-space-lined public paths that you can take and you can, there's open lawn space, there's benches, there's raised garden bed boxes in these pathways. And then there's an east-west path also that kind of allows you to kind of get through the development, which is, as far as I understand, not too typical of a townhome project like this, which usually that interior is all parking. I also heard something about infrastructure. One of the things that we're making them do as part of this is having underground detention to hold a 10-year storm flood. If those of you remember those floods we had over the past, I think the year was 2014, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
So essentially, right now, there is no stormwater detention onsite, essentially, you know, it's the school property, it's sort of built old-school, I guess pun intended, but essentially this new development will be required to have that detention. So essentially because we're a combined sewer system, you have that flood, essentially this will, it has piping system that sort of slowly releases that water out into the system so it doesn't overburden it. The other concern, and again, if I miss any, I'm happy to speak to those, but the other one I remember was the tax benefit. And we're going to go into detail on that in the brownfield discussion, but I do have that packet up here and I can talk a little bit about that, and I'll get into more detail during the brownfield discussion, but in general, what we're looking at annually, once the brownfield plan is completed for this, and that's sort of a situation where the, all the homes have been completed and sold, you're looking at about $361,000 per year in local tax revenue during the brownfield plan, and that would be per year. And so during the brownfield plan, and again, I'll get into some of those details of like what that means, like during the plan, after the plan. During the plan, the local jurisdictions, which is the schools, the libraries and us, will be collecting a total of about $500,000, $501,000, which it was also mentioned, this is a currently zero-tax-based property, so it's generating nothing right now. And then we'll also be generating, so for our brownfield site, revolving loan fund, which is sort of a, brownfield tip, and again, we'll get into these details, but we have a revolving loan fund that allows us to provide upfront assistance to developments that have a high level of barriers, whether environmental or site. For that fund, we'll be generating about $1.8 million. So that would go into that local brownfield authority fund to support the redevelopment of projects throughout the city. I think that was all of them. If I missed any, I'm happy to speak to the others.
Yep.
I think, Mayor, if I could, through the chair, just for clarity, I think Jordan had referenced the planning commission meeting as being on June 21st. I think that was the initial meeting. It's my understanding there may have been a July 19th meeting where the planning commission actually approved the proposed plan.
Thank you for pointing that out. That's accurate, yes. So June 21st was probably the, one of the most significant exchanges of public input of the seven meetings that were held. On July 19th, we sort of summarized those and that was sort of the compromise that was brought back. Thank you, Dan, that's correct.
And just one other item with respect to the trees. I did see Jordan's note in his staff report to council reference that in addition to the 13 at-risk trees, it's my understanding that the proposal is to add an additional 102 trees. That's also included in the materials on that.
An additional 102 trees, yeah.
That's correct. I will just in fairness point out, those won't be old-growth, but they will be, it exceeds, it exceeds the replacement ordinance. And one thing I did want to point out that reminded me, again, thank you, Dan, there was a question of sort of survivability. That's something we're looking at and it's different with every tree, but one extreme example I'd like to point to, obviously, we're not dealing with that here, is if anyone's familiar with the Ross School of Business at U of M, they, we certainly don't have their tree relocation budget, but they relocated a tree that was, I would say, larger than any that are on this site and they moved it when they reconstructed the Ross Business School. And essentially it was, I don't think we'll have to deal with anything this complicated, but I say it just to, it can be done. I mean, they basically had this like air balloon, it was like moving a space shuttle, but they moved it and it survived.
Jordan, where did, you mentioned the figure of 66, which was a proposal from where?
Yes, that was, so the petition that was referenced by, I believe, Mr. Pelzola, so that, we actually saw that.
Up here?
Yes. And it was brought up at the planning commission as well. We took that to heart. And so essentially, a lot of the planning commission discussion was about this and that's sort of why we have this end product that we did, is we kept the underlying zoning R1 and reached a compromise position to get close to that density. And one of the things that, or the two decisions that we kind of looked at, when the developers kind of came back, and they can speak to this as well if they'd like, but the compromise that we reached when they responded to that meeting after June 21st, to go down to 66 units, we would lose the ability to include the public amenities, so there was north-south pathways and the inset parking, which would be coming at the cost of the developers. So those would have gone away. And frankly, and this is just, you know, perspective of me as your professional staff planner, the development basically would have had the same footprint, you know? So when you're laying out homes of this nature, townhomes, these structures, there's only so many ways you can arrange them and lay them out, especially when the focal point was these pathways. So to do that and to snip off those extra six units, it didn't really make a noticeable visual impact relative to the reduction from 81 down to 72.
Thank you.
You mean from, I'm sorry, from 72 to 66?
Well, just to clarify, so when they walked into June 21st, it was 81 units. So the big, the big difference was noticed when they dropped from that to 72. To go from 72 to 66 didn't have that, you didn't...
Correct. Yeah, okay. I just want to clarify because I think I heard something different.
So does council have any questions at this point?
I have more comments, more than anything, but wanted to give an opportunity to anybody else to say anything first.
I'll make a motion for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
So we can get to comments because I think that's where most of us are.
Yep, we need a motion to have...
I'll move that the city approved the planned unit development application agreement with the site plan date July 12th, right, or 19th? July 12th, 2017 at 427 Allen Street with the findings and conditions listed in the packet.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there support?
I support.
It's been moved and supported. All right, now comments of council.
I guess I'll start by, having been through this on the planning commission, the, at the end of the day, it was a very long and arduous process through the planning commission, but I think it needed to be. I think the resident feedback was incredibly helpful to get to the product that, the proposal that we've got here today. It's not perfect, but it's a far cry from the 102 we started out at. And I, as part of the planning commission, I know we took the residents' comments to heart, balanced with what was appropriate and what we should do with the property, deeply concerned about the character of Ferndale. But knowing that development was going to occur on this parcel as the school district, you know, wants to divest themselves of that property. So I'm interested in what my colleagues have to say here, but I can, I certainly am confident and feel that through this process, the seven meetings, the planning commission, that the residents were heard and because of the feedback and the flexibility of the developer candidly, we're in a better place than we were when we started this months ago. So that's my opening comment and I'm sure I'll have more later.
Through the chair?
Sure.
I would like to just sort of appreciate Councilman Martin's comments about the process because I think it has been pretty rigorous and thoughtful and went above and beyond normal what could have happened under a non-PUD process. And I think the PUD process can be quite confusing in a community, particularly when it's not used very often, but it does give more power to the city to negotiate with the developer so that the right outcomes are had through the project for the neighborhood. And, you know, I have a personal connection to the Dales neighborhood. I co-founded the Dales Neighborhood Group with many people in this, in this room and I've heard from lots of residents pro and, you know, leery and outright against this project. And so I guess I wanted to comment, because I always like to start high-level, come, start at the, you know, the sky level and come down to, down to the ground, is that Ferndale is changing and city council is responding to that change. The change is coming to us in a lot of respects. It's the school district that had to solve their financial problems and reduce their, you know, their, had to reduce the number of buildings to accommodate the number of schoolchildren they had. They had 7,000 students or a building size for 7,000 students, but only 3,000 students in their body, in their student body. And so that was a private or a public school sale to a private developer. So it was a city who's reacting to the sale and the school district trying to find a developer in which they could sell to. And so that's how the city entered this, really, is saying, please find the right folks to do a good development here. And certainly we championed, I did, to make sure that we could reuse the school district because I'm a preservationist and I prefer to reuse the school. And I fought for that behind the scenes, but that didn't transpire. So for me, this is where we are in the neighborhood and having the right housing mix for our residents is really important. And we definitely have a change here too, albeit, you know, out of control of anybody here at the city, but we now have 60% homeownership and 40% rental. And it used to be 70% homeownership and 30% rental. So we've had a... here at the city, but we now have 60% homeownership and 40% rental. And it used to be 70% homeownership and 30% rental. So we've had an increase in rentals over the course of the last decade by 11%. So we have more people renting than more people buying, and that's a reality. So for these condos, they're for sale. People are going to buy them. I think that's great. That is going to address our homeowner, our drop in homeownership, and that we're providing the right type of housing for our residents, because we also have a changing demographic. People don't want to have a single-family home. We have baby boomers who want to stay in the community but downsize, but not take care of a single-family home. So there's a lot of things here that this solves, and this property is where the solutions for some of these problems are being presented. So, you know, I've been on the brownfield incentive process the whole way, and I think it's been a good one, and we're going to be talking about that, too. And I have questions about costs for the units and things like that. But overall, the city's been really attuned to the residents, making sure that there are connections. I mean, there is no connection. You have to walk around the school in order to get to the park. Now you'll be able to walk through the property in order to get to the park. So there should be stronger connections from the street into the park area. So the residents coming down the side streets of all the Dale's, Dale streets, would have more opportunities to get to the park in a safe, lit environment, not around a vacant, half-lighted school, which has been that way for the last two years. So there would be increased safety for the residents, at least in the neighborhood, and eyes on the street, if I use a James Jacobs term here. And then finally, you know, mature trees. My god, I love our trees, which is why I, you know, wanted to champion a tree canopy study, because trees, unfortunately, you know, die, unfortunately, and, but they also can be replanted. And what I've heard from our residents is that we want to do renewable energy, and that we want to have renewable energy sources. And so I think trees are our number-one way, and so that's how we're going to help replace the trees that are there. And I've heard from the residents, we hope we can recycle those trees in some way, or sell them back to our artisans in the community, and so I hope we champion that with the developer in some way. And then I think that's all my comments for right now, about some of the things that I've heard from the residents tonight, and overall throughout this two-year process.
Other comments, questions?
I do have a question, but first, I want to thank the residents for coming out and expressing your concerns, sharing with us your issues that you have with the project. I have a question, I guess, for the developers. The Ball Diamond was named after a Ferndale resident. The grandson reached out to me. The Ball Diamond's name is Edgar J. Lutzser, and I'm wondering, is there an opportunity for maybe one of the streets to be renamed after him? You know, at least there's a recognition, you know, to keep that, keep that in place. Or I don't think we have room in the park to build another Ball Diamond. There's, just doesn't functionally, we don't have the room in that park. But perhaps that could be considered.
With the councilman's point, are the Ball Diamonds and Martin Road Park named?
Pardon?
Are the Ball Diamonds on Martin Road Park, are they named currently?
I don't believe so.
Maybe we could transfer it to one of those Ball Diamonds. I mean, there's a significance to the baseball diamond, I think. Maybe not.
I'd have to talk to the grandson.
But I support your, I support your intention.
Maybe, that's a good, the conversation we could continue to have.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just wondering, with the information that Jordan shared regarding some of the concerns that we heard tonight, I was just wondering, is there opportunity for, is this closed, or is there opportunity for residents to come up and speak on what they have heard? I mean, there might have been some information that we're not aware of.
Yeah, I mean, it's not typically part of the process, but we're pretty flexible. If somebody has a burning comment or question, we usually let them speak.
Just wondering if there was some.
I have one question. Are you saying Roberts Brothers doesn't pay taxes on that property?
No, no.
The schools didn't pay, the schools didn't pay taxes, is what he was saying. So there was no taxes paid, but.
They owned it for a few years now, and I thought you said there's no taxes being collected on their property.
Correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but this is all sort of predicated on getting the approvals. It is still technically nontaxable until this whole process is closed. They do not own it at this time. There's paperwork that's been signed, but it's all contingent on approvals, and that's fairly common in real estate, is you don't typically start taking on obligations when there's conditions in a sale. Because a lot of times, you know, a development, you know, it's contingent on approvals like this. And so if you don't get those approvals, then you have a property that you can't develop. It's a common practice, but that's generally where it is right now.
Thank you.
I have another, just a couple of questions. I mean.
Sir, could you come up to the. Yeah, come on.
It looks like this is a speeding train that's not about to stop, but I would like to know if, you know, when you have a neighbor that doesn't really take care of their place, there's the ordinances that, you know, protect the kind of like look of the neighborhood.
Right.
And generally, with a construction like this, there's some kind of assessment fee that the residents will pay to keep up the appearance and take care of the grounds and the buildings. But I've also heard of, you know, kind of nightmareous situations, like if you go to Royal Oak on, what is it, 11 Mile and Main Street, there was that kind of like condo building where the, all the, you know, balconies were falling down, and it was an eyesore for several years, where the funds of the assessment don't end up being saved correctly or whatever. And I'd just like to know what kind of plan there is in place to make sure that if this becomes a part of our neighborhood, that it remains a good neighbor for the rest of the state.
So that's a fair question, and I don't know if it's Jordan or the developers that can speak to the maintenance fees and the condo fees, or however that's going to work.
I can speak to parts of that and the developers, if you'd like, you could fill in the gaps. But one of the other benefits of a planned unit development is there's typically what's called a PUD agreement. So this development agreement sort of governs and ensures that not only our local ordinance will apply, but they lose their approvals if they fail to keep up on the property. In addition, and we'll talk about this on the next item, assuming this, if this does get approved, then we'd consider the next one, if they get their incentives approved as well, those become jeopardized if local ordinance is not followed, if maintenance is not kept up. So there are a lot of strong safeguards in place beyond sort of the typical project to ensure that these stay up. And my department does oversee code enforcement, so it'd be something we would be directly involved in, and having been part of this process for the past two years, that's something that's very high on our priority list, to ensure that this follows the highest standards of code and everything else.
And, you know, I will address the comment about a speeding train, because I will, I have to take exception with that. This has been anything but a speeding train. I have not been aware of a project that has had this many meetings, this many hearings, this much discussion, this much community input, and it was obvious from the beginning that we weren't going to get something that 100% of the people agreed with. But I do want you to know that this council and Jordan's staff, and our staff at City Hall, and the developers, and the residents, have been committed to trying to get to a compromise that would work for folks. That's why I asked about the number of, the 66, because I'm not on the planning commission, but I heard that number being proposed, and, you know, as someone who's not on the planning commission, it strikes me as kind of amazing that we're arguing now about six units, which I agree would not appreciably change this project. So I feel like there has been a lot of compromise on both sides to make this happen. The other thing I would like to address is just, and we hear this a lot, this notion that there's a lot of development going on in Ferndale, and we're changing, and we're going to be Ferndale, I mean, we're going to be Royal Oak, or Ann Arbor, or something, and as many times as we up here say, no, it is not our goal to be Royal Oak, and I think, come to a woman, Piana, you said it best, the change is happening, whether, we're not initiating it. The change is happening because the economy is good, there's land to be developed, people, this is an attractive community that people want to come to, and our job is to try to manage that change as well as we can. I moved here 25 years ago. This town is a lot different than it was 25 years ago. It's a lot different than it was 10 years ago, and it will be different 10 years from now. So all we can do is try to make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire community, that don't destroy the character of this community, and I realize that can be a very subjective thing. I happen to believe that the condos that we're building on the old American Legion site are a hell of a lot better than that old building that was sitting there for 10 years unused. I believe that's an improvement. Other people can disagree. I happen to believe that the Ferndale House is an improvement over the Save-A-Lot Grocery Store that was there. That's me. I happen to believe that's an improvement, and not only aesthetically, but because it offers other housing choices for people. You know, we are locked into a primarily single-family home community, which is wonderful, and we all love it, until you get older and you want to age in Ferndale, and you don't want to take care of a house anymore, and you want a condo, or you want an apartment, or a senior building, and then we have very few options for those people. So it has also been part of our strategic plan to diversify the housing stock in Ferndale, which is part of the reason that this project is even moving forward. So I realize that it's not perfect. I realize that reasonable people can disagree about what this does to the character of the neighborhood, but I am convinced, and although I'm not on the planning commission, that everyone that I've talked to has made every reasonable effort to try to come to a compromise that brings those kinds of housing options to Ferndale without destroying the character of Ferndale. And I think that compromise has been reached, so I'm going to be supportive this evening.
I have one final comment through the chair. I want to say that the Dale's Neighborhood Group was critical of being established, a neighborhood presence, to actually work better with the city through this process. There wasn't a neighborhood group. I don't think there would have been as good of outreach into the neighborhood, and even though some residents here hadn't heard about it, neighborhood groups are all supported by volunteers of the neighborhood. But having an organizing presence is really important. And neighborhood folks move on, they move out, and it's about maintaining relations and contacts with that. So as a nod to the neighborhood group and those who are here, I encourage you to participate on the Facebook group of the Dale's Neighborhood Association, because they've dealt with the parks, they've dealt with Laverneuy Tap coming, they have dealt with Mo Matels, all through that group, through the city. So it is a great place to get connected with your neighbors, to address concerns, but also have picnics, and Halloween tents, and other things that make a neighborhood great, and why people want to live there, and will choose to live there, and new housing. So that's the Dale's Neighborhood Group Facebook page.
Other comments or questions? We have a motion and a support. If there's any other comments or questions, if not, I will have her call the roll. Okay, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Lee Snay?
Yes.
And Mayor Fulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. So now, moving on to our second public hearing this evening, is the brownfield plan and reimbursement agreement for this same property. And Jordan, would you introduce that item now?
Absolutely, thank you, council. And thank you, Marnie, for putting these two items next to each other, so we could kind of benefit from the detailed discussion that we had previously, so obviously, we're familiar with the project. So what this is about now is the incentives that are supporting the barriers to redevelopment, such as the requirement of stormwater detention, site demolition, and other remediation costs dealing with the redevelopment of this property. So there's some quick facts, and you know, the packets I handed out today, just so you had them in person, so I'll flip through and just kind of give the highlights by the numbers. So I'm going to kind of repeat those, and I'll give some details for the benefit of folks who maybe aren't familiar with how brownfields work. There are multiple brownfield projects in the city of Ferndale. This, I believe, would be our 15th brownfield project. So if you're familiar with Axle Brewing on Laverneuy, that is one of them, it's one of the more recent ones. Ferndale House is another. So what it does is it kind of removes barriers to development. So the nuts and bolts of this project, essentially, what it will do is will allow for the maximum reimbursement of $2.8 million roughly for those remediation costs, which come, and essentially, how these are structured, just sort of, again, as a reminder. So brownfields work at, you start with, in typical projects, and I'll come back to the fact that this is a school property, which starts as a value of zero, but typically, you start at a base value, so a value of A. And so improvements are done to a project, so it's redeveloped, in this case, will be 72 townhomes, and that will create a taxable value of B, so an increase. That increment between value A and value B is what makes the brownfield credit possible, because essentially, that increase in value is leveraged as somewhat of a rebate, to sort of simplify it down, for some of these barrier costs. So with that in mind, essentially, and Mark Quimby of, it's SME, right? We deal with quite a few firms that do, that operate in this field, so with 15 projects, I try to keep them all straight. But essentially, Mark is here on behalf of the team that put together the brownfield plan to speak on some of the details. I'll regale you with the numbers. So essentially, you're looking at an estimated plan length of approximately 15 years. Per our incentives policy, we don't allow anything over 20 years. So what that 15 years includes is reimbursing the developer for that maximum eligible reimbursement, even if those costs come in higher, for whatever reason, the maximum eligible reimbursement they will get is the $2.8 million, which, again, comes from that increase in value that is not currently being collected. So it gets captured, once that value's created, as these properties are assessed each year, and so that comes to reimburse that, but it also will generate, there's a tool in this one, that's only the second time that we're using this tool, the other time was the Wilson Project, but what we call a pass-through agreement. So I mentioned that this property currently has a taxable value of $0. So if you were to go off of value B, you would capture all of the revenue, and there'd be nothing going to the local juris, excuse me, local jurisdictions. So the pass-through agreement that we have in place caps the capture at 95% of the total, and so that's why the local jurisdictions will receive during, over the duration of this plan, that $501,000. And then essentially, what will happen is, this project is also getting, as part of their $2.8 million, they are getting from that revolving loan fund, an upfront loan of $385,000, which also gets repaid from the capture of this project. And so that loan is estimated to be repaid by year 13. The developers will be repaid by year 11, according to the estimates in the plan, and then, once both of those things have occurred, we are allowed to capture for up to five years additional funds to replenish the local site remediation revolving fund, which supported this project and would support other projects going forward in the future. And again, that total is about $1.8 million. And then, once all of that is completed, and once this essentially, that capture stops, and now you're collecting the full brunt of the increase in taxable value, the local jurisdictions can look forward to an estimate of about $361,000 per year in taxable revenue from this plan. And so.
For the city, that's for the city portion, or is that for all local?
That'd be all local jurisdictions, correct. That's your schools, your library, and us. And just sort of to kind of pan out a little bit, that maximum reimbursement accounts for only 20% of the overall investment in the project. The developers are bringing just over $14 million to the table that they're investing in this. And again, so you, you know, you look at those aggregate numbers, per our incentives policy, we, obviously, the goal is never to be a majority partner in any of these projects, it's sort of to eliminate barriers. So this requires like looking at a pro forma, et cetera, and then you can see on page three of the packet, you can see a summary of the eligible activities, and just for the benefit of the folks at home that maybe don't find this reading very exciting, or maybe didn't get a chance to look at it, those costs include demolition, site preparation, so grading, and excavating, and things like that, that get you ready for other eligible expenses, such as infrastructure improvements, I mentioned the stormwater management. Also, it includes a limited amount for the environmental investigation. So part of these projects, you're required to do soil borings and testings to discover any contaminants that are on the site or in the building, so that's part of this as well. So again, those are on page three. And then, again, I have the consultants here to kind of go into the details of the plan. But in general, the two instruments that you're looking at tonight, so are the first, the plan, and then the reimbursement agreement, which is the instrument of that plan, which essentially enumerates the details. It details who you're supposed to mail things to, and where the payments are supposed to go, and how often they can submit for reimbursement, and it reiterates the maximum eligible expenses, and all of those numbers, and enshrines those, and it enshrines the obligations of meeting ordinance, meeting all the other things that they've agreed to, the site plan approval. In fact, they're not allowed to get considered for incentives until they get site plan approval. And so when they got approved on July 19th, they went in front of our incentives committee, which is a task force of planning commission, brownfield authority, and staff, and city council, to kind of give it an initial vetting and take a look at it, and then it went to the brownfield redevelopment authority where it was approved, and now it is here before you today. So that's the summary of where we're at. Happy to answer any questions, and again, the consultant team is here as well.
But before we do that, this is a public hearing, and so I need to open this up to the public, to see if there's anyone from council that would like to address us on this issue. So is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on the brownfield plan and reimbursement agreement? Plan and Reimbursement Agreement? Yes? Can, are you able to come up, sir, to the microphone, or?
Can you hear me?
You know what? Believe it or not, this is televised, and for people with insomnia, they like to watch this, and, yeah.
Name's Funley, and I live on East Lewiston. Twice, I took my calculator and ran through the taxes. Are these units really going to tax at only $5,000 for new big condos? Is that right?
Those are projections according to what they're estimating that they're going to sell them for, and the taxes that it'll collect, and they can speak to it a lot more intelligently than I could, but I can invite them.
Just to pursue that, I have a really old, small home, and I'm paying $2,500 for it, and I've lived there since the last cave bear. And that is my question.
Sure. Tim Lockerren, Robertson Brothers, 6905 Telegraph. Good evening. Just to answer that question, you know, I think we're conservative, for the most part, with what our projections are. We just did a calculation of what we think these will sell for, which are average about, between the two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units, about $200,000, and that's kind of what we came up with, was a 5%, just using, you know, the standard tax equation.
Right, because, so these people will pay the same millage rate as everybody else in town, so it's totally dependent on the sale of the unit, so they'll pay whatever their fair share is based on what our millage rate is at the time. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening on the Brownfield, the Brownfield Assessment Plan or the Reimbursement Agreement? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, and I'll open up the questions of council. Or motion?
Through the chair, I have a question for Jordan. Can you just clarify, in the packet, we got the accounts for the developer payback is 11-year, and the LSRRF loan payback is 13, but it's the estimated plan length is 15 years, developer and LSRRF payback is in the actual summary and background? There seems to be a two-year difference?
That's a typo on my part, I apologize. The latter is the correct one. The one in the reimbursement agreement, which I could flip to, just to make sure. Yes.
So that would be an amendment as part of the approval of the recommended action is to amend it to, the estimated plan length would be 13 years, right?
Correct. The way the reimbursement agreement is structured is, it's the lesser of, essentially, we leverage our incentives policy, we say the leverage of, our standard practice is the lesser of 20 years, or the number of years projected in the plan. So that's essentially at that point.
Okay.
So is that 13 years?
That would be, yes, 13 years, and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, 13 years for developer payback and LSRRF payback. And then, the estimated, and I apologize, it can get confusing with the number of years thrown around, because essentially, what you're accounting for is, you're talking about the milestones for everyone getting paid back, so it's 11 years for the developer, 13 years for the loan that we're giving them upfront, and then when you tack on the five years of revolving loan fund capture after that, that's 18 years. So I hope that clarifies that.
No.
Awesome. Okay, I'll.
So what do we need to amend this motion to capture the plan? Is it the 18 years, then? I was with you up until you threw 18 out there.
The quick, the plan itself is fine. It's the, just the recommended action for council, right? That just needs to be changed.
To?
13.
Okay.
Because it says, under the fourth bullet point, estimated plan length is 15 years, whereas if you go to the first page of the TAF Brownfield Quick Facts, it says, accounts for the developer payback at 11 years, LSRRF loan payback at 13 years.
Yeah, okay.
Does that, do you see it?
Yes.
Okay. So that's just a quick amendment, right?
Correct.
That would be, it would change it to 13.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
So any other questions?
Yes.
Uh-oh.
So I'm Mark Quimby, I'm with SME and with the developers. I guess the only concern there would be that, you know, these are obviously tax projections, and I think the understanding was it was going to be 20 years, or whatever it is, up to, you know, and so the question is, is like, what happens if the taxes, like, the home sell a little bit slower, or whatnot? I think the understanding was that it was going to be.
Jim Clark with Robertson Brothers, same address, 6905. We're asking for what's available. We have been extremely conservative in sales price, and in sales price, and we believe that the, you know, the 11 and the 13 are, we're going to beat by a substantial margin based upon the level of interest we've already received in the possibility of this happening tonight. So having said that, since there's projections, and I don't have a good crystal ball, we ask for whatever we're allowed to under the Brownfield redevelopment. So we're asking for the maximum, it gets paid back the earlier, you know, the minute we pay it back, it's over and it's done, and your five years starts, but I don't want to, I don't want to put an artificial shorter time in than is allowed under the Brownfield regulations. Does that make sense?
Just from the staff, the staff perspective on that, when we did this, and I believe we took a similar approach with Axel Brewing, is, you know, our incentives policy is sort of the guidepost that staff works with, and so we kind of, we wouldn't object to leaving it as it is in the plan, which it does call for 15, because the important number that we kind of came up with collaboratively as the incentives committee is, is we don't want these extending beyond 20. And so we feel, and that was really for developer reimbursement, and so within 18 years, not only would the developer be paid back, but so would we, and so would our capture. So that's sort of where we would be coming from, so we wouldn't object unless council felt strongly, but we would not object, and we would sort of find the developer's position on that reasonable.
Okay, so if I just summarize here, what happened is, it says up to 15 years in the Brownfield Plan, but the Quick Facts of summary here says the actual dates that you're targeting now, but it's not up to the 15 years allowed in the plan.
That's correct. The plan, that's correct, and that's, I apologize for creating that confusion.
And the summary says up to 15 years, because that's what's deep in the, deep in the plan.
Right, right.
Okay, does that make it clear? Okay. Got it. I got it. So. I just had some questions about, I left cost off as a, unit cost off from the other conversation, and deliberately kept it here, but can you talk a little bit about your target cost per unit, and just, so what council is pretty clear on?
Point of order. I don't think we closed the public hearing.
We did.
Did we?
I thought we answered his question, the gentleman's about to, did we close it?
No, no, I'm pretty sure. I'll do it again, just to be sure, but I'm pretty sure.
The lawyer's talking to me.
Okay, so I'm interested in just sort of where we started and where we ended up, more from the, I just wanted to make a point about what we're incentivizing in terms of housing. So, you know, the site needs to be tearing down, there's asbestos in the building, and they're putting in infrastructure to connect, you know, make the sort of interconnections between the units from the street off of fielding to, and through the, what am I saying? Through the units, right? And then doing some green infrastructure, stormwater retention, right? So this is what all those costs are covering, and what we're agreeing to pay for tonight.
That's correct, council.
Through the chair, they have to be eligible activities.
Well, yes, eligible activities, yes.
But just to be clear, not the construction costs of the unit.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that. Construction of the infrastructure.
Right, yeah.
Only certain.
Only certain ones, yes, I understand.
Eligible activity costs.
Yes. And so, which we have also provided the same incentive package, similar incentive package to the Robertson Brothers for the Wilson property, to remove the building there, which has asbestos, and also a storm drainage infrastructure that needed to be relocated.
Yes, we had to move a storm line there, that's correct. Yes, it is, actually, it's modeled on the same template that we used for Wilson, and yeah, it's, you know, the bucket's for site preparation, which includes the demo, which includes the underground detention, so all of the site prep, but none of the vertical costs, if you will, of the homes themselves.
Okay. And I guess my point is, a couple points. One is that the city has come up with a great incentives policy now, and we're making sure that we are incentivizing projects that are bringing value to our community around housing, green infrastructure, green building where we can, and so I think this plan follows the new incentive policy, because it's for housing. But my other question was, going back to the beginning, is can you talk a little bit about the change in the price of units? So one of the concerns I heard from residents in the beginning was making sure that the price points of these units didn't get outpriced the neighborhood, and the price of homes in the neighborhood is between, what, 140 average to 175?
Right, yeah, it's somewhere between 130 and 150 dollars a square foot. You know, we have a new, it's new homes, so they would be a little bit higher, but yeah, we have to stay, obviously, in that range, and, you know, by lowering the number of units, obviously, that affects things, it's still the same amount of, you know, costs. In addition, we had to, you know, go with the larger product, so that did get squeezed out a little bit as far as affordability, which is something we were trying to avoid from the beginning. I think we'll probably be in the 180,000 range for the 1,200 square foot, and we'll be, we will be over 200. Of course, we haven't priced this yet, but over 200 for the 1,500 square foot. So I think it's still affordable, and there's still an option for that, but yeah, I mean, overall, yes, the overall sales price, together, when you, you know, congregated, is going to be higher than I think we would have hoped for at the beginning. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, can you, how many parking spaces were added to go from the higher dense, to go from higher density to lower density? Just so I understand the difference in parking.
That's a great question. When we first started out, I think we had 104 units, and they were all single-car units, or single-car homes, and we had some surface parking for that, but we were just over one, we were probably 1.2 spaces, so probably around 110 overall parking spaces. Now we have over, I think it's 148 total, and a far number, a far less units, we've got 72 homes as compared to 104. And then we also have, if you've noticed, the neighborhood talked about the inset parking, there are 20 spaces, so 10 on Gardendale, 10 on Allen, that is inset, which I, you know, I heard some complaints about parking on both sides of the street. We did that specifically so you could park and still have two lanes of traffic as it goes through. So there's, you know, with that, which we're not counting in our calculations, but we have almost 170 spaces for the, you know, 72 units.
Right. So I guess my point is, is that the price of the units went up by, how much do you, the price of the units went up from higher density, or from lower density?
We estimate probably about 24,000.
All right. So the cost of the units for more parking went up by $24,000. So I just wanted to say that parking isn't free, and parking is real estate, a parking space is real estate, and while this Brownfield Plan isn't offsetting, you know, isn't covering any costs for parking per se, we are incentivizing a project that is incentivizing more parking over more housing, at the end of the day, right?
Right.
So.
We would agree to more housing, by the way.
So I just want to be clear, the choices that we're making as a community, while we value to have more affordable units in our community, we're choosing to increase the price to add more parking, and that's the cost of free parking, because there isn't really free parking. I just wanted to make that point, because I think we're going to be having this discussion in the future, and we need to have a hard discussion with our residents. Do we want to offer housing here that we can have all price, all people of all income levels to afford, or do we want to have higher-end housing for more parking? And that is a discussion for the other day, but those are the choices. Parking costs money. It's not free. There's hidden costs that you don't find until you actually buy a unit. So at the end of the day, I've approved this project all along, and worked with the incentive committee, have listened to the Dale's Group, and have talked to Planning Commission members about making sure this project is meeting the right outcomes, and I think the incentives here are really targeted to the Brownfield part, cleaning up, demolishing the building, removal of asbestos, and putting in some infrastructure that is applicable to the Brownfield requirements per our lawyer.
Other comments or questions?
I have some questions. They're construction-related, so I'm hoping the developers can answer them. I'm curious, with the single-development homes, like on Wilson, you have a customer that comes to you and says, "I want this choice with this many bedrooms, et cetera," and that's what you build on that site. This is a bit different, so how do you know what to build based on demand? Are you going to build all of these units? Not at the same time, but are you going to build unit after unit after unit, and then wait for people to come and purchase them, or are you going to build them as they're being purchased?
Sure, that's a great question, yes. On Wilson, that site, you pick your plan, you pick your color scheme, that sort of thing. Obviously, the color scheme here, and I didn't show you tonight on the slide, but we have certain buildings which have a certain color scheme that's already been predetermined through the Planning Commission. These particular homes, the, again, we have two different products, we've got the 1,200 square foot homes and the 1,500 square foot homes. The 1,200 square foot homes have a two-bedroom configuration, and that's what the third level gives you. We do have some options on the first floor, which is really your garage, and then there's potentially a small little craft room, that sort of thing, or just a large storage space. So very kind of limited options on that one. However, the 1,500 square foot, those homes will have either a two- or three-bedroom. So we would not start the building until we start, you know, until we sell probably, you know, say it's a four-unit building, we would sell three of those units and then probably start the building. So we're not going to do them all at once, we're going to sell them, and we are phasing the project, so, you know, we'll probably just put out maybe four different buildings for sale. People can choose which unit they want in those buildings, and how many bedrooms they want in that, and then we would build a suit from then. So it is a little different, but at the same time, they do still have the selection as far as, it's a two- or three-bedroom, and of course, we have a design center, in fact, we're just building a new one, where they can come in and select anything they want to put in there as far as options. So it is still a build-to-suit, it's still, I wouldn't call it custom by any stretch, but it is, there's still all those options that you get with the single-family ones.
Okay. Are you going to start building from the north-south, or from the park going north?
The phasing line really is, it's not right down the center from north-south, it's a little bit off, so it, I don't know exactly which buildings we would start first, that's a good question, but we would start either from the north and move south, or from the south, or move up, so still determined with our construction team.
Thanks.
Sure, but it wouldn't be haphazard, it would be line-building as much as possible.
Yeah, I would figure you wouldn't build on this end, and then go to the other end and build, because, yeah, that just, that just wouldn't make sense. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Or a motion?
I move that City Council approved the Brownfield Plan and Reimbursement Agreement for the Parkdale Towns Project, for which a public hearing was held on August 14, 2017.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. All right, comments? Nope? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leek Smay?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. It's been a long process, we appreciate that. Being here in Ferndale, we're delighted with the product, we're delighted with the two housing types. You never talk about neighboring communities in a different community, but in neighboring communities, we offer a $200 per home, a give-back as a community contribution that would typically go to a community foundation, so as we close each home, we would like to offer that to Ferndale, so at the end of the project, you'd have $20,000 that would go to, you know, $200 apiece with every house. It's our way of giving back to the community, we obviously don't do it until we have a project, so we appreciate it, and you can talk about what you'd do with it, but that's something we'd offer.
As the chair of the community foundation, I'll be in touch.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I encourage a donation to the Dale's Neighborhood Group.
Thank you, that's very generous, thank you. All right, we have another, we have two more public hearings, actually. The next one is this, huh? Yeah? Is a special assessment sidewalk district, number for 2017, and Lloyd, you're going to introduce this sidewalk assessment district.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. Tonight before you have the 2017 Sidewalk Replacement Program, SAD. Tonight before you have the 2017 Sidewalk Replacement Program, SAD. This year's program consists of nearly 50,000 square feet of sidewalk replacement. It affects 840 properties approximately, includes two areas mostly in the northeast quadrant. There is a depiction in the packet of the area that is affected, and we're requesting council to approve it, so we move forward. Later on in the agenda, you will see the public bid for the actual work.
All right, so at this point, before we have council discussion, I would like to open it up for the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening on the special assessment sidewalk district for 2017?
Yes, I would like to.
Please.
My name is Matthew Fermoy, I live at 2273 Hamada.
Okay.
In regards to that, I've got a couple pictures for the City Council. I'd like to have a look.
Thanks, if you give them to our clerk, yep, if you give them to our clerk, that'd be great, if she'll pass them along.
Yeah, I only got two, I only...
Have you shared them, by the way, with our DPW folks?
No.
Because we'll make sure they see them too.
Just from this afternoon.
Okay, all right.
As you can see on the photos, that in the replacement thing I talked, it was D as a hole, or pitted, and then I put my tape measure next to it, and it stated two inches or. Now, as you can see on the other photograph, I had done new concrete the end of last season through the Oakland County low-income situation. If I had have been notified with this letter, I had have done the concrete, replaced that accordingly, because it would have been less, you know, more beneficial for me, because I did it through the low-income situation, where I'm not responding, I don't have to pay for this until I sell the residence.
Right.
And as I state, I've been a resident since the city of Ferndale since 1971. I used to live on La Prairie, and I used to went to Taft School. So that was very touching, because I did not know about that.
Okay.
But moving on to the topic that I'm addressing, you know, so I'm against, you know, this one piece, and that's such a small little divot, it's not obstruction to any child in a little scooter, or somebody walking, that, you know, you know, that this is such a major, you know, there's other areas that are in my, on my block that needs to address. Like, I also took as my approach, now, Mr. Beener had finished building all the rest of the houses, and my street is horrible. I have water buildup at my approach, you know, what's going on, you know, we're dealing with, okay, the sidewalks, yes, some of them are in very bad shape on my block, but also the street. I've seen a lot of construction, that Mr. Beener built all the new houses across from me where our school used to be. Now, I know we just finished with the new water main service running at the end of the street between Ferndale and Hazel Park, you know. My question is also about the street, you know, we're talking about sidewalks, but I also want to bring up, what about the street? You know, we've had, you know, regards to that. But I am also opposed to the sidewalk repair, because I also put in a sprinkler system, and my sprinkler system happens to run right underneath that slab.
Can we share those with Lloyd, by the way? Lloyd, if you're interested in seeing those.
And I've also talked to other neighbors in my block about getting a price point of cheaper than 161 bucks per slab.
Well, that Lloyd can directly address, but I'll ask him to either address it, or if he needs to follow up with you, Lloyd, you give us direct. Lloyd is our Director of Department of Public Works, sir, so he's our expert in this field.
You know, there are set specifications that we use to evaluate each piece of property and the abutting sidewalk. These specifications are developed, they may be a little bit stringent, but we only see the property once every 10 years, and in some cases, perhaps even a little bit longer. So although the defect may seem minor, it certainly could develop into a trip hazard, which would make both parties, public and private, you know, potentially liable for some sort of an injury. And so there's the same guidelines that we apply everywhere. We have had a number of calls, there's, as I said, there's 840 properties affected, and we have, with the help of our engineering consultant, we have visited and contacted each and every one that have called us. I wasn't aware of this particular complaint. Photographs sometimes don't do it justice. We do, we are doing this work mostly in-house, and so we've had some staff trained to do inspections that we used to pay for. And so we have resolved all of these issues one way or the other with all the other phone calls. I'd like the opportunity to meet with the property owner and look at it. But in addition to that, there is a hardship provision in our program, and so if you're eligible for that hardship provision, it does stretch that cost out. And finally, I think you mentioned that you might be able to get it done less expensively than $161 a slab, which also property owners are welcome, if they can do the work themselves, or find a contractor that can do it less expensively, to do that on a private basis with inspections here at CED.
So, sir, is that acceptable if we connect you to Lloyd, and he comes out and visits and talks about...
Yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah, it's workable in regards to that. It's just that, you know, if we, I know that they were marked a year before or something ago, but if the letter was sent to me, then I could have addressed it through the low-income situation where I wouldn't have to worry about, you know, the $161 is not a lot of money. But the was, the point is, that I'm trying to make is that if we, myself and the other residents had have known this, instead of getting the letter July 17 of this year, you know, a year after they were marked, and the original markings worn off, you know, we were like, you know, somebody came through, you know, and marked all these, and then the markings wore off, didn't know what they meant, and then they come back, we get the letter before they even remarked. That was just, most of also disturbing is that some of, not all the residents on Hamada got the letters, you know, but I was fortunate one, I guess because of my last name beginning with F, we got the letter, but, you know, the sidewalks, like, what you talking about? And then I had talked to Scott, I guess he's the general contractor.
No, probably me.
Yeah, Scott, I talked to him, and he said there was two. Now, when it came back to remark, there's only one. So in some way, there was confusion also.
Well, there has been a little bit of confusion. These were marked several years ago. In certain areas, Consumers Energy has done a lot of work, and actually repaired a lot of these sidewalks that were previously marked. I don't believe they were on Hamada. Some of the neighbors he may be talking about that have marked sidewalks but didn't get a letter, a lot of times them are due to city trees, that the city would be responsible to make them repaired so they don't get an assessment letter. But again, I'd be happy to go meet with the gentleman, I'll get his name and number, and we'll go take another look at it.
Let's do that, let's start there, sir, and then if you have any other, you know, if that doesn't work out, we'll be happy to hear from you again. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir?
I have a kind of a comment involved this evening. I won't be sure if you'll get it.
All right.
I happen to remember when my, I had a slab that was marked last year, and it hasn't been 15 months since it was marked, and I just got the letter two weeks ago. That seems like an incredibly long lag time. And why is that?
I could only echo the same comments that Scott did. There's been a lot of construction, as previous residents have mentioned, in the city, and so some of those have been replaced and have dropped off the list. But more importantly, which we won't be doing next year based on the number of calls we got, we tried to combine two years' programs and cut down the administrative costs. Initially, as council will remember, we were paying 35% or more overhead on these costs. In recent years, they've been reduced to 5%, 5% to 10%. And so this was an additional effort on our part to try to pull back two programs together, cut those costs even further. But based on the number of phone calls and having to go out and remark areas that, like you're mentioning, it really didn't end up being very cost-effective to do it that way.
Okay.
And so we're going to go back to doing, you know, the standard year policy. That's why you'll notice that there's two areas depicted in the bidding documents, that's the purpose. And so we did try to back two years together and get a better, you know, cost, but it really, really didn't pan out the way we had hoped. No harm, but no advantage either.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Floyd. Sir, do you want to address us, are you here to address us? Yeah, please.
I've got a few questions.
All right, welcome. Give us your name and address.
Mike Bond, 2864 Inman Street. Couple questions. First, I didn't realize I could have called you, and I did some of these questions answered ahead of time. This letter didn't really do a good job of stating that, so. The determination on what you consider having to replace a slab for, I mean, a crack in the slab, when it's now elevation difference at all, why would that have to be replaced? Because there's no trip hazard involved with it at all, it's just a crack. Yeah, go ahead with that one.
And, you know, with any type of broken concrete, especially when you're waiting for 10 years or more period before you revisit that, anytime there's a crack in any pavement surface that can, and water can enter into, over time, it's only going to get worse. And so the freezing, the thawing over the next couple of years is going to just exacerbate that break and enlarge it and possibly cause it to heave, and then result in a trip hazard before we are able to come back around and make the repair the next scheduled time.
Okay, so I understand, we can do the work ourselves if we chose to do that, correct? We just get a permit from the city for that?
Yes.
Can we do partial slabs, just where the crack's at? Instead of doing a full slab, to do, say, a 12-inch section instead of a full, or...
Typically, we require a full slab to be replaced. We'd have to take a look at it, it really kind of depends, but, I mean, certainly I'd be happy to work with you and take a look at it.
And as far as the assessment is concerned, I have a slab that maybe 12 inches of it is on my property, the rest of it's on the neighbor's property. How do you determine who pays for what on that?
It would be broken into both parcels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, how much time do we have before we can make up our minds whether we want to do it ourselves?
I think we could, really, anytime before the tax roll is due.
No, we, I mean, we'd need to get going soon, so I think the letter said September 1st, permit has to be at least pulled by...
Scott's worried about the contractor being able to complete the work before the weather turns bad.
Right.
Sir, how long would you need?
September 1st might be a little quick. See if I could get the work done by somebody else.
Are we, and we're talking about a single slab?
No, actually, there's probably three, or two, two and a partial on my property to talk about.
You know, I think either way, you can handle that. And so if you could just get back with me...
All right.
So you'd be the contact person from this point forward?
Yeah, so could I suggest that you guys connect?
Is this your number here?
Lloyd, I know we'll be more than happy to...
Absolutely, I'm sure we're...
To work on those details with you, sir. All right?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to address council on the...
How about on the subjects? I've never been to one of these before.
Not right now, because we have a public hearing on this particular subject. So this is a public hearing for people to address council on this particular item. Is there anyone else? All right, so we're going to close the public hearing portion. And now I will open it up to council. Questions or a motion?
I would move that we approve the resolution to proceed with the 2017 sidewalk replacement program, that the city clerk be authorized to sign said resolution.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Pollock. Any further discussion? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Lloyd. And we have a fourth public hearing, very unusual for us this evening, but this one is on the CDBG amendment, and so, is that Jordan? Although he's not here. Who is doing CDBG?
I think Jordan and, yeah, she's going to get him.
Okay.
Excuse me, while you're looking, what does that mean, CDBG?
Community Development Block Grant. Money we get from the federal government to do specific things that are outlined in the agreement. Yes. All right. God, you still got the whole agenda to go. Although it shouldn't be bad.
Scott, you were supposed to take longer with the sidewalks.
Mayor, council, long time no see. So the other public hearing I have before you today has been a few months in the works, and I have to, if Helene is still here, which I guess I'm not surprised, but I appreciate that she was here tonight because of her advocacy and those, the rest of the county Board of Commissioners and everyone who works for the Home Improvement Division of their Economic Development Office for that windfall that sort of spurred a lot of these amendments. If you recall, during budget times, with the influx of development, it's coming into the city, the increased revenue coming to the city, and talking about opportunities to do creative things with revenue such as CDBG that is grants, outside of, normally what we do is we spend of our $75,000 annual allocation, we spend the majority of that, $62,000, on code enforcement. Because of that aforementioned permit revenue and additional revenue to the city, we're allowed to maintain those services for code enforcement, but use CDBG dollars for more transformational projects, additional enhancements in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods. So to quickly summarize what we've got before you today, essentially, we had been in the works of looking at our 2016 funds, which have been released already and are eligible for spending. So we're looking at the remaining balance of our CDBG funds for '16, and as well as the '17 funds, which we applied for last December, received, and would be released this coming summer/fall. So hearing the news from Oakland County, they were looking for shovel-ready projects that were transformational in low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods, of which generally is everywhere in Ferndale is CDBG eligible, except for, as you might imagine, our downtown district, and I believe one other neighborhood, which escapes me at this point. So, long story short, and I'm obviously happy to go into details in your packet, but essentially what we did is we had a great partnership with the Parks Department, with our new director, Lorena Wheeler, had a lot of energy into the plans to rehab some of our parks, obviously with the Parks Master Plan, the Parks Commission did a lot of great work in giving us a great vision, so shovel-ready was not a problem for us. And so when we had the opportunity to pump these funds into Wanda Park, and really jump-start and accelerate and build on the work that Lloyd's been doing with the parks already, the park bond plans, this was a really cool way to bring some great plans to life, I think, two to three years earlier than they would have been if we didn't do this. So that's really exciting for that neighborhood, and having, you know, working with the businesses on Wanda Street like Gage, and meeting a lot of the neighbors in the course of my year here on your team, I think that this would be a really great asset to that neighborhood. Additionally, we looked at several other partnerships. So if you look at, I'm looking at the second page of your scope, and you see those three bullet points, those are essentially what we're looking at. So we had another really great partnership that was also spurred on by Oakland County and MDOT in the city of Detroit, which is to do what we could to improve the situation and address the challenges of chronic homelessness in Eight Mile and Woodward. So we've had a really fantastic partnership, we've had several great meetings with all these stakeholders, with Detroit showing up in force, and Ferndale PD. I have to thank Chief Collins and Sergeant Baron Brown for coming to the table in strength to help us move this forward and bringing, you know, years of their efforts to try to support this situation. And so now all these folks are at the table, building on the momentum. Councilwoman Piana, Mayor Protem was also part of this, the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, Southwest Solutions, South Oakland Shelter, and Community Housing Network. So both sides of Eight Mile, statewide, local, county, all these different offices, and so we're putting our sort of humble allocation toward this of 10K. And so we're fleshing out a scope there. Modest increase to yard services to support up to two dozen more households. So we allocate monies to yard services, and through the county, we end up contracting through a bidding process to the Oakland Livingston Human Services Agency. So we're going to modestly bump that up to add another two dozen homes, and then again, obviously, supporting the great plans that are put together for our parks with Wanda Park. So that's generally what you're looking at here. And so you can see, if you've kind of flipped past the summary I created, you'll see the scope of work document on Parks and Rec a letterhead, that kind of really gets into the nitty-gritty details of what we're doing. And as you flip through that, if you look to the third page of that, you see that sort of estimated project budget near the bottom there, that's kind of where it begins, to talk about what's going to go into Wanda Park. And the next page there is a more detailed table. Lorena is obviously here, she can kind of speak to the rationale behind those amenities. We think they're really phenomenal, really comprehensive, and it's something that's noticeable, both in a visual, but also in terms of a value and quality of life aspect. So we're really excited to be able to do this, and this sort of, while we have the opportunity to use these funds, and Commissioner Zach kind of spoke to the funding uncertainty around CDBG, and again, I have to commend, you know, just everybody at every level of government, from local, you all, and county, and state, and even federal, to kind of advocate for this program, because it is transformational funds if you use them for those purposes, and we're very excited to showcase what we can do, both with ourselves and our neighbors. So we're really excited about this, and, but again, with that, any questions, comments, concerns you have, I'm here to answer.
Not yet, because this is a public hearing. So at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. So, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public, to say, is there anyone from the public that would like to address counsel on how we use the federal CDBG funds for 2016 and 2017? All right. Not seeing anyone? That's okay, we don't take it personally. We're closed the public hearing, it's a requirement of receiving these federal funds. And so, now, I will open it up to counsel for questions or comments about the CDBG funding for 2016 and '17.
I have a comment. Do you want to wait for a motion, or...
For comments, we should wait for a motion, yes. Other questions, clarification or fact?
I would move that we approve the funding of amendments to the city of Ferndale, CDBG program allocations for program years '16 and '17 described by the CED department in the scope of work presented to counsel, for which a public hearing was held on August 14th, 2017.
Support. All right, moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Now, any kinds of comments that you have would be appropriate.
This is terrific and very detailed. What it's missing, though, and it's not something that has to be addressed tonight, is an evaluation phase. So, we're doing some things here that are, I think, rather innovative, and are at early stages, particularly around the support, but not to sound like a broken record, I'm really interested in how we're defining success and how that report gets back to us.
Is there, in particular areas, though, or in just...
Well, I think the parks piece is really well laid out. I think the public services for emergency services piece, I think that could be fleshed out more, that needs to come back. And then, I think the yard services piece is terrific, as far as the intent, it's very clear, but I couldn't tell you today how many properties we help, and I know I ask every year, but I never see a report or something that says this money, we did this property, so we're doing 12 more now. I don't know if that's a 10% increase or a 50% increase. So, it would help me kind of conceptualize it with an evaluation phase for all of this, where you come back at the end of the fiscal year, or wherever, and report out on each of these and say, here's, here's some metrics around success, or not success, and I'm willing to try and fail at things, but here's what it delivered. Like, the parks detail is fantastic, I get that, that's very clear, it's either going to happen or not, and we see, we can check that off. The other two are just still a little mushy to me.
Those are very well taken, we can absolutely get that to you. And actually, I'm remiss in not including that, when we, when we do the, we put the contract together that comes down from Oakland Livingston Human Services Agency, that data is in there, it's what's provided to us, but I can, I will make sure I synthesize it and get it to you, and absolutely, when we kind of bring back at every phase, before that money goes out for those categories, we'll make sure we're engaging counsel in getting the metrics right.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, I do. Through the chair. I'm a little confused. Financially, what are we approving?
It's a great question. So, essentially, what you're approving, so essentially, what happens is, so, when HUD gives us this money, essentially, the way the process goes is we apply, Oakland County has to certify our plans, because they administer this for us, and there's a lot of value add, we can talk about that as well, but a lot of value add for them administering this for us, rather than us doing it directly. So, essentially, what happens is Oakland County approves our application, gets submitted to HUD, Housing and Urban Development Department, the federal government, so when they approve it, essentially, what happens is then, the plan is approved, and the funds then get released. So, essentially, it's, and it's essentially a reimbursement. So, we would outlay these funds and then submit a reimbursement request to HUD, and then that would come back to us.
So, are we, are we being asked to approve $726,000 as the request?
Oh, no, thank you for the clarification. So, what we're being asked to approve is, so, the vehicle for these is the application, and then the approved plan, once it's approved. So, what we would be amending, in this case, for 2016, would be amending our plan, which was approved, so essentially, that's the roadmap for HUD, that says now, we're going to, we're essentially reprogramming those funds, and because the funds haven't been released yet for '17, but our application was accepted, but we also, the added wrinkle with '17 is we also had that windfall of funding, that extra $34,000, so what we're doing is modifying our application. I mean, effectively, we're telling HUD that, hey, we're going to spend this on different stuff. So, what it'll do is it, essentially, it'll change the list of our, if you will, eligible activities, so that when we go to, we'll spend and then reimburse, then we'll have an updated approved list of eligible activities.
And if I'm, if I, just to add on to that, so for 2017, we're talking about $109,622.
That's correct.
And that includes the one-time $34,000 payment from Oakland County.
Yes.
Okay, so we're being asked to support program year 2017.
Yes.
Item number two.
And a rebudget of, what is it, $75,000?
$56,000.
$56.
From, I'm sorry, from 2016.
From program year '16, which is active released money that we're actively spending and getting reimbursed for.
Okay, thank you, because I'm like, all these numbers and nothing, nothing within the request says...
Between HUDs and brownfields, I can appreciate some additional questions.
13 years, 15 years, 18 years.
Just 75 years and a million dollars, don't worry about it.
So, thank you, I think these are really innovative changes. If anybody is following at home...
Good luck.
I can't imagine, but if you are, you know that we and many other communities typically have used this for code enforcement, and so, I thought your explanation in here was wonderful. Our permits are up, so we have revenue in code enforcement that can offset these, for now, if that changes and permit fees go down, or, you know, revenue goes down, we can reallocate this in years forward. But it's an opportunity for us, while we have that extra revenue, to divert it from code enforcement, not that we are not committing ourselves to code enforcement, nothing changes there, just the revenue stream. So, that's number one. And I do want to just sort of highlight the program that Councilman Martin talked about, because I'm not sure folks at home know enough about this program. So, literally, if you are a senior 62 and above that is income qualified, or disabled and 18 and above, you can call us and arrange to have lawn cutting, leaf raking, snow removal, and those sort of services. So, I'm not sure everyone always knows that those services are available, paid for through these CDBG dollars, so thank you, federal government, but not President Trump, because he wanted to zero out the CDBG money in his budget this year, so fortunately, Congress fought him on that and reinstated the CDBG funds there. So, no thanks to the President on this one, but thanks to Congress for reinstating these funds, because they are critical, these services, this isn't a huge amount of money for us, but these are critical services, in addition to what we're going to be able to do in the parks this year, Haven with domestic, you know, abuse and that sort of thing. So, well done, I think, in being innovative with this money.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I may add too, just on the access of those resources, another important point is you can have a caseworker come to your home, there's a little application that you fill out, it's a two-page, we have that on hand, you can have somebody from the county come fill that out for you, we can come fill it out for you, our staff is able to do that, so you can call our department, you can call my direct line, it's 248-546-2363, and that's 546-2363, and if you need help filling out the app, you don't know where to find it, one of the things that I've been really trying to help our staff, build our capacity to, is help bird dog these applications and help sort of make that process easy.
And Kara, that application is on the website?
Yes.
We hope, we think?
Yes.
If it's not, it will be, but...
That's right.
Yes, all right, awesome.
I'll search it with the new, the new awesome search.
All right, any other comments or questions on CDBG funding?
I just wanted to echo the innovation coming out here, particularly, I think, the new initiative to address the chronic homelessness at the Woodward Eight Mile Bridge, and the perceived and real safety of residents from both sides of Detroit and Ferndale have of using the sidewalks around the bridge, there's consequences of having homeless living there in terms of people feeling safe walking around there. So, I think, you know, sharing resources is the best way to solve a problem, and I think we're upping our game and making sure we do that the right way.
Yes, all right. Any other comments? Then, Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers...
Oh, wait a minute, do we have a motion?
I made a motion.
Yeah, we did, right, yes. And Raylon, Councilwoman Leaks May supported it, yes.
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thanks, Jordan. Moving on now to the consent agenda, consent agenda items are items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion, unless council wants to pull anything from the consent agenda, but let me read the consent agenda for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the July 24th regular and special council meetings. Item B is the adoption of the proclamation declaring May 25th, 2017, as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale. Item C is the approval of the purchase of a John Deere 1600 Turbo Series 2 Arium mower with a road light kit and beacon light from Bader &amp; Sons Governmental Pricing Program for the cost of $53,652 to be charged to the general fund parks capital account. Item D is the approval to authorize the removal of the traffic control devices located at the intersection of East Nine Mile Road and Leland, Pharaoh, and Martin Road, as submitted by our chief of police. Item F is the, is an approval to authorize the changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ferndale and the police patrol unit for the period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2021. Item F is the approval of the backfilling of two customer service representative one positions. And finally, item G is the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council's finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to support the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved by Pollocka and supported by Leaks May.
If I may, through the chair, I have a question, a clarification.
Sure.
On item F, you, we have an approval of backfilling two customer service representative one positions, but in the actual request for action, it says the pay range for CSR 1 through CSR 3 as determined is reflected below. So, are we hiring CSR 1s and not 3s, or what is the 1 through 3?
That's the position that we changed up last year, where it's, it's all 1, so it's 1, 2, and 3.
I got you, okay, thank you.
It's all one scale.
I recall that now, I appreciate it, thanks.
Good question. Other comments on the consent agenda?
I have a question about 7D, perhaps the police chief can answer that.
Chief, you talking traffic light?
It's traffic lights, particularly the one at Martin Road and Pharaoh. The recommendation is to keep the one, I'm sorry, Martin Road and Wanda, the recommendation is to keep the one at Wanda, but remove the one at Martin. I'm wondering what, I guess that supplies anything, how are these, how are these locations reviewed? I mean, do we have someone that sits there for a day and watches traffic and counts cars, or...
We actually conduct traffic surveys, and we use TIA to do that, and we do do traffic counts, as well as visual observations for pedestrians and things of that nature. Has to meet one of nine warrants in order to be held accountable for traffic citation if they violate it. Those three did not meet those warrants.
Okay.
Isn't it that, isn't it, and I'm just asking this question now, because that prompted me, the little black rubber line that goes across, isn't that a counter, isn't that...
Those are, those are the...
Those are the counters, right?
Yes.
If you've seen those, and that's what DIA will lay out.
Yeah, but it counts people, and obviously, people aren't going to step over, you know, a little rubber tube across the sidewalk, you know, so obviously, someone's got to, you know, someone's got to look.
People are done visually, the pedestrians are done visually.
Okay.
Okay. So, if I see one of those and hop up and down on it a whole bunch of times, am I going to get a traffic light?
You could.
If you really want one, I'm just kidding.
Do you feel the size of a small vehicle?
Fortunately enough, I am. All right, thanks, sorry.
Councilman Pollocka?
Yeah, I, that's fine, I just, I think residents probably on Martin are going to get a little upset that now they're going to be having, you know, wait to get onto Nine Mile, but I think that's the only issue we're going to find. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, any other comments on the consent agenda? Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May? And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. Good, moving on to the regular agenda, two and a half hours in, we're finally to the regular, finally to the regular agenda. We have three items this evening. Item A is the consideration of the 2017 sidewalk bid.
God, again.
Lloyd, sidewalks again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as mentioned earlier, and this is the public bid portion, we're recommending approval of the low bidder. It's Audio Concrete Construction, the references check out, and the estimated price of the work, which will be modified according to actual quantities, is $317,296.25.
Have you ever used them before, that you're aware of?
Not since I've been here, but I do know that the references were checked, and they seem to do okay.
Okay. Who have they, who are their references? And if I'm putting you on the spot, I don't mean to.
I did not print that out, but they have done governmental work in the area.
Okay. Okay.
Once again, I just want to thank you for listing the range of the bids and stuff, so we know it went out competitively, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the low bid of $317,296.25 from Audio Concrete Construction Incorporated to perform the 2017 sidewalk replacement program, the expense being charged to sidewalk improvement line, item number 101441805010.
Support. By Martin and supported by Piana. Any further discussion or comments, questions on the sidewalk? All right, Marty, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd. Regular agenda, item B is a consideration to purchase police vehicles, as Michael Larry would say, vehicles, channeling Michael this evening. Chief, you want to introduce that item?
I will, Your Honor, this is the vehicle, the patrol cars and one detective cars that will, were scheduled to be replaced during the budget hearing, the FYE 2018 budget hearings. These vehicles have been bid through the Michigan Bid Program, and it includes the changeover costs for those vehicles to be done by Canfield Incorporated. It gets on the regular agenda, because it goes over $100,000.
Yes, that is correct.
Right, although it's a fairly routine thing that we do, because we have now a regular vehicle replacement program.
The CIP, yes, Your Honor.
Which this does not, this is in line with.
Correct, it does not exceed that.
Right, it's just a lot of money. So, are there questions at council?
I do. What, what makes you decide what type of vehicle to purchase? Like, make a model, you know?
This goes back several years ago, when Ford Motor Company stopped making the Crown Victoria CVIP.
I'm sorry.
So, we had to make a determination of which vehicles that we would replace with, and it would be a decision that would, that would go forward many years, because the equipment that goes in those vehicles will turn over and follow those vehicles, because the barricades, the gun lockers, all those type of things, we don't repurchase those, those are repurposed to the same vehicle. So, once we have a Ford Explorer, that will be replaced with a Ford Explorer until the foreseeable future, until something changes where we can't do that anymore. And the same with the, with the Chryslers, the, those will be replaced by the Chargers as well.
Okay.
So, we had, we had actually, we had looked at all vehicles that were pursuit rated, we had them here, we drove them for a while during that whole process, and those are the ones that we had decided on.
I was curious, because I noticed that there was a Charger and a Taurus, and I just wondered why, because I noticed before you were buying Chargers for most of your pursuit.
All those vehicles are pursuit rated, so half of our fleet is Chargers, half are the Ford Explorers, so when, one, as we replace them, we replace them with the same vehicle that they came from.
Okay.
Other questions? Other questions? Or a motion? Is there a motion?
I do have a question.
Oh, sure.
Regarding the replacement vehicles, and it says that you expect to replace them every 10 years. Has it been that already?
A detective vehicle lasts 10 years.
Okay.
A patrol car, we normally would replace a patrol unit every two years. We have found that patrol vehicles with the 12-hour shifts last at least three years. So we, so the rotation actually has slowed down quite, quite a bit. It's turned out to be a cost savings to the city.
So is there a motion?
All right. I move to approve the purchase of two 2017 Ford Intercepters from Gornow Ford for $55,350 and two 2018 Dodge Charger Pursuits for LaFontaine CDJR for $48,104. Total amount $103,454 from Capital Outlay Vehicle Purchase Fund, number 101301977500.
Support. Moved by Martin and supported by Leaks May. Further questions or discussion? Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to regular agenda, item C is the rules of procedure update to add discussion items. The memo is from Marnie, although April, I think, is it, so Marnie, are you going to introduce that? Or I know that was also an idea of yours.
People can talk about it. Marnie, you want to? Either one. Sure. Well, we have had a few instances where we've had discussion items that we've been adding to the agenda, and it seems appropriate that with everything going on to reduce the number of work sessions that we are having outside of regular council hours, if we add a discussion item to the agenda, then we can consider those items as part of the regular meeting rather than having to have so many special meetings. But initially, we need to do a notice that we have an intent to change. So this meeting, we are asking, this is the notice that at the August 28th meeting, we'll be making that change to the council rules of procedure.
So if I may through the chair, this will replace the special meetings that we have, I guess, just a point of discussion to make sure we're clear. No?
No, no, no. No, it's more like we've been having so many work sessions.
That's what I mean, work sessions.
But those could be handled as discussion items during the council meeting, but at this point in time, we don't have a council agenda item that basically permits discussion items that aren't.
But the reason I said no is it won't eliminate the need for work sessions.
No, no, I didn't mean to. That's not what I'm trying to say. I'm sorry. I used the wrong words. So usually when we have those discussions, those scheduled earlier before a meeting or what have you, so are we picking up that hour and adding the length of our regular meetings? Because, for example, it's 9:30 right now. We just got to regular. Are we moving that hour into the body of this meeting where it would be 10:30?
I don't think that's the intent. I think it's on those occasions when we do have something to discuss. If something isn't on the agenda, like when we don't have public hearings, I remove public hearings from the agenda. So it's the option to have them as part of the regular meeting if they aren't something that merits a whole hour and a half discussion perhaps.
An example was the housing policy, where we'd already done a lot of work. We didn't want to have a whole work session on that. We had a discussion item, I think, a meeting ago. So they'll, they'll be discussed with the mayor ahead of time, but it's intended to, it's like a 15, 20-minute conversation, like checkpoints, rather than having to have a whole work session. So they'll be used on a rare occasion, but we've been finding some need for just some conversations as it relates to some direction from city council that may not warrant an entire work session. So we still plan on unfortunately having work sessions.
No, 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 I'm not dissing them. I'm just wanting to make sure.
No, the intent is not to make them.
And that was, that was an example that prompted it us first because our agenda is actually set by, not by ordinance, but by.
Rule of procedure.
By rule of procedure, and we don't have a place in our agenda for something that's just discussion that needs no action.
Agreed, but I'll use the planning commission as an example. We've had to, thank God, split the planning commission into two meetings a month because of discussion items, because we were frequently here till midnight. So I just want to make sure we're not creating a, kind of backlog.
Well, as half of the agenda committee and councilwoman Leaks May is the other, we promise you that it will only, it'll be used sparingly, but only for those times when there are short items that don't require a full work session.
I was thinking along the lines of, I was thinking, well, sometimes our discussion items last about an hour and a half, so.
Certainly not our intent. That would be a work session in my, in my mind.
I'd like to, if I may, offer some definition, because we've had a half-hour work sessions and an hour work session, and more than an hour than work session. So if you're saying less than a work, less than a work session, does that mean it's less than 30 minutes? Typically. They're just meant to be touch points where. Okay. There's not a lot of.
Staff needs direction.
Like the housing policy was a classic example of, we've already talked about it at length. We wanted to make sure that we were on the right path to bring it back. I think it's coming back on August 28th. So they'll be used rare, but it's intended to be short pulse points, if you will, just to make sure. And if we find that they move into longer convers, maybe we, we can't have them. But, which is intended that we're, work session, we're booked up pretty much now through September on work sessions. So we're running out of space. So we just have a lot of things, especially with the strategic plan coming at some might just be a check the gauge. Just need to start coming in and working on Saturdays. Exactly. So it's, again, if we start finding that they're hour-long conversations, we'll have to push it back. It's just, again, at this point, we don't have an avenue to even have that on the agenda.
All right. Is there an opportunity for us to limit the time that this topic can be discussed? Say, let's say, you know, we limit it to 30 seconds, 30 minutes, and after 30 minutes, we.
I agree to 30.
You know, we say after 30 minutes, you know, then we move it into a regular work session.
Yeah, they'll be last on the agenda, so again, even if something happens like tonight and it goes three hours long, we would certainly not have the discussion.
There we go. I see.
Sure.
After the regular agenda.
But you, but we could do that and, at this point, I would just say, let's try this because there has been a recent need for this, and we are not currently allowed to do it technically. But if it doesn't, we can, we can change this up, restrict ourselves time-wise or whatever else council is amenable to doing. We're not, you know.
I'm skeptical, but I'll support trying something different.
With that, I will move to provide notice of proposed amendment eight to the council's rules of, rules of procedure, section two, meeting procedure to add discussion items immediately after the regular agenda and proceeding called a council to be considered for adoption at the August 28th, 2017 regular council meeting.
Support.
Moved by Leaks May, supported by Polica. Further discussion? We discussed it. And the discussion can't be more than 30 minutes.
Thank you.
Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colton?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. So now we're at the point of call to council, and I will ask the police chief, anything for the good of the community that you'd like to share this evening, sir?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that Michael had all the great stuff to say about Dream Cruise, but we would like to remind the public that on Saturday, no commercial vehicles or vehicles over 10,000 gross vehicle weight or any vehicles with trailers will be allowed on Woodward Avenue from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday. That is a traffic control order issued by the state attorney general's office, and it runs the entire length of Woodward Avenue. There will be signs posted at Eight Mile warning folks, and we will gently remove them and send them on their way to, with the proper directions on how to get through there if they absolutely have to and will find themselves on Woodward Avenue on the day of Dream Cruise. It does not apply to Thursday or Friday, just Saturday itself. Also, we want to remind the public that 10 o'clock on Friday evening, Woodward Avenue will be shut down at 696 and every mile road going to Pontiac. So if you want to be on the roadway after 10, you will be in a big traffic jam, as will you will be on, excuse me, Saturday at 9:00 p.m., 10 o'clock on Fri, 10:00 p.m. on Friday, 9:00 p.m. on Saturday. It will close down at each mile road.
Is that typical? Have you always done it on Friday?
Yes, we've done that for, every year except for the first year.
Okay.
And then lastly, we want to remind the public that Dream Cruise is an alcohol-free event. Please stay off the roadway if you've been drinking. Please pay attention to what you're doing with distracted driving. We find that that is the biggest hazard of the whole event. So we hope everybody has a great time, but we want them to be safe.
Well said, sir. Thank you. Jenny, anything from HR this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let the public know that we are recruiting for a ton of positions right now. Two of the most exciting would be, we are working to establish an eligibility list for both police officer and firefighter. Candidates who are interested for the position of police officer do not necessarily have to have graduated from the academy. We are one of the few communities that will send candidates that are successful in our process to the academy. And for the firefighter position, you do not have to already be a licensed paramedic. That is also another program that we would be willing to sponsor candidates through that is different than many other communities. So both, for both of those positions, the starting process for that would be to visit the EMPCO, that's E-M-P-C-O, different than M Coles, website and register to take the initial entry test for both either of those positions. In addition to that, we are still accepting.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that a new policy that we will take folks before they graduate from the academy or from the, for fire?
Nope.
I, I, if, if we've done that before, I just wasn't aware of it. So I'm just curious if that's something new that we're trying.
For the police department, we have always still sponsored folks through the police academy. We find that that is, there was a period of time where we had eight years where we did not hire a police officer. We may have lost it during that period of time, but we have reinstituted that policy. We hope it, that will be one thing that will attract minorities and females to the law.
Yeah, I'm very supportive. I just wasn't aware if we had done it before. Thank you. Appreciate it.
It has been a very long time since we did that with fire as well. I think, chief, I'm not sure, Sullivan, how long it has been. It's been a very long time.
13 years.
Yeah. But our hope is obviously, again, that we can continue to attract and retain a diverse group of candidates, maybe who can't afford to put themselves through either of those processes or afford to not work for that period of time, but otherwise would be a good candidate and a good fit for our department. We are also continuing to accept the applications for the human resources director position and that any and all of our openings, you can find on our new website, which are actually easier to get to than before, at www.ferndalemi.gov. Thank you.
DPW labor one.
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed one. We are also actively establishing an eligibility list for the DPW grade one labor. We've got a few openings in the DPW, currently three positions that we are looking to fill. And then obviously, as we saw approved tonight, the customer service rep will be up and going as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question through the chair. Are we utilizing social media to announce these positions?
We are. I know the city has been posting it through social media. I know I post it through all of my own personal pages and try to involve as much that, as we can in that way. It is on all of our websites that link us directly now to a, a new and improved job profile that we've created for every position that we have open. And so it really provides a nice overview of our city and some pictures and an overview about the position. We link our job description to that as well. So we've made a lot of improvements in the way that we advertise all of our positions.
Thank you. Thanks, Jenny. Lorena, anything from recreation department this evening?
Just a few events that we have coming up. Just want to make everybody aware of them. We've been running our Come Out and Play with Parks and Rec staff series, and our last one is actually this Wednesday. We're partnering with Oakland County Parks, and we'll be doing geocaching at Martin Road Park, so feel free to come out. We also have Shakespeare in the Park that'll be starting this weekend and the following weekend, so it'll be every Friday and Saturday at 7:30 p.m.
At which park?
That'll be at Martin Road also, right behind the hill. We have our fall soccer league starting out for, starting for the youth soon. We're short coaches, so if you know anyone who wants to volunteer to be a coach, please contact the Parks and Rec Department, 248-544-6767. We also have an adult baseball league that'll be starting soon. Registration is open now. And our safety town is starting to wind down. We have our last safety town open house, which will be held next Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at Garbage Park. So feel free to bring the kids and the bikes and trikes and big wheels and have fun, learn about safety about, through, that they can use through their childhood and through Ferndale. Lastly, we are losing two of our Parks and Rec staff who've definitely been an asset to our department. Jacob, Jacob will be going to law school. He's been accepted to Wayne State, so his last day will be the 20th, and we're very proud of him. And also Shelby will be going back to school. She was our summer rec aide, back to Grand Valley State. So just wanted to acknowledge them publicly for all their hard work and everything that they put into Parks and Rec Department. They're both Ferndale residents, and they really made this summer pop and programs really come to life with everything that they've done.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Jordan, anything else this evening?
Nothing else.
Had a lot of FaceTime this evening. All right. Chief Sullivan, anything for the fire department this evening?
Yes, sir. Uh-oh. I come very close.
Oh, copycat.
I have something else.
Thank you. I think.
One minute CPR.
It's not ticking.
It's not ticking.
Ferndale Fire Rescue.
Sweet.
Unlearned, one minute.
All right.
Thanks for the quick answer.
Your Honor, this is our new public relation campaign through the fire marshal division. Very proud, working with Kara, that we got it all out there, and it'll be released on Dream Cruise this, this coming weekend, so.
So you can walk around with your open beer?
No, that's for cold pop or juice. Cold pop or juice, councilwoman? We, we also, the bag says, learn CPR in a minute. Last year, we, through Captain Twain, EMS division, did about eight, just over 800 people in CPR that crossed Woodward from one side to the other in one-minute CPR training. So the program is also expounding upon lifesaving skills as the people walk from one part of the Dream Cruise and events to the other. And then the yo-yo is to bring some old-school entertainment back, and we do have young firefighters that don't know what yo-yos are.
Chief, can you really learn CPR in a minute?
Yes. The new standards of CPR is you don't do any more breathing, so it's just compression. And they picked a couple favorite disco tunes and that, that hit the right beat so that you're at the right rate of compression. So it kind of makes dying in the street up.
I will survive.
I think it is one of them.
That is planned.
So that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
We appreciate it and look forward to seeing your, your folks out there for Dream Cruise. Thanks, chief. How about the finance department this evening? That's it, Cheryl? Okay. Kara, anything else from the communications, community engagement department?
Anything else to see me in here?
All right. Lloyd, anything else from DPW?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to inform the public and council that on Friday, we were notified by MDOT that beginning tonight at 7:00 p.m., they will be doing work on Eight Mile. That's supposed to continue all the way through the end of October. That includes milling, surfacing, and a whole multitude of works. Good news for Eight Mile, but bad news obviously for traffic control. They have promised that they would be out off of Eight Mile this weekend, so there will be no construction activities during the weekend. Good news for Eight Mile, but bad news obviously for traffic control. They have promised that they would be out off of Eight Mile this weekend, so there will be no construction activities during the weekend. And they also have promised that they would be off the road by 5:00 a.m. in the morning. So, from 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. from now until the end of October, you can expect delays on Eight Mile from the Southfield Freeway all the way to Woodward. And I had a visit from the Oakland County Health Department in regards to West Nile. They asked that we make a push, particularly during Dream Cruise. They dropped off some, some yard signs for West Nile virus. West Nile virus peaks in August and September, I was informed, and that encouraging people to wear insecticide, stay out of, you know, woods and shady activities in the dawn-to-dusk time periods. And also, in particular, people who are over 50 years old are much more susceptible to a fatal outcome in the event that they contract West Nile. And so, it is important for the next couple of months to, even though the weather will begin to be cooler, to eliminate all of those breeding grounds that you see in your yard, any place there's standing water, to use insecticide and to just basically avoid mosquitoes in any way you can.
Thank you. It's very serious, and now that I qualify as over 50, I'll be getting my long-sleeve shirts out for the Dream Cruise. Thank you, Lloyd. Who's that guy next to you? I remember his name. I've seen him before. Joe, welcome back.
Family unit is back.
We are delighted.
Six weeks of vacation, public. I'm back, and as my return certainly, I'd be remiss if I didn't have a parking update. So, one, it is the fall. We're jumping back into September, which means residential parking zone application updates are just upon renewal. Residents who are in existing RPZ zones can expect to get notified by Republic Parking via email from our website, parkferndale.com, and by mail as well. It's just going to give you a general update on the application. Everything you did last year remains the same procedurally. There is no change. We've received a couple of questions about how much enforcement's been going on the last year. I would like to also announce that we've, have now one year of enforcement data on RPZs, so we have a good idea about the activity and citations that are issued. We are including that in executive reports that we'll be publishing monthly in the coming months. Within the next two months, I think our first one is due, but we will be publishing the parking enforcement citation activity that's going on in the various RPZs as part of our performance reviews in the name of transparency. Secondly, I would just like to make a reminder of lot closure impacts from the Dream Cruise that will be occurring throughout the Dream Cruise. As I understand it, I believe the city hall lot in parts of the library lot are going to be impacted by the Dream Cruise in Mustang Alley as well as the lot near Como's. Lot closure information and other impacts on the parking system are communicated via the Park Ferndale website. If you sign up, you can get text alerts or email alerts. Go to www.parkferndale.com. Sign up. Do you have anything else? All right, thank you.
Joe, we could listen to you talk about parking online. Thanks. Welcome back.
You will in the next three coming months.
Through the chair, if I may. Joe? Joe, I have a couple of questions for you.
Oh.
Actually, really one question. Over the last probably month or so, a number of people on social media have talked about starting RPZs on College and Wordsworth. Are you, are you aware of how any of, either of those are going? If there's other streets that have moved forward with submitting petitions to turn their street into an RPZ?
Sure. Per the ordinance, there is a formal petitioning process. That process is published on parkferndale.com. If you go to residence, you'll see the RPZ area, and that actually includes a petition packet, everything that you would need to print out, and it explains the process. We have received one request to look into formally. I have heard of these questions, and we've received a few informal phone conversations, but formally, we've only received one petition packet, and we will begin the review process and go through the requirements per the ordinance language.
Okay.
So, that's initiated.
Thank you.
Marnie, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. April, anything from the city manager's office?
No, I'm off.
Not tonight? All right, Dan?
There's a closed session, but other than that, nothing.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for reminding me. Councilman, you know I sometimes forget.
Fun never ends.
Councilman Martin?
Nothing except that it was unexpectedly a really good night for the Ferndale Community Foundation. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody who's made commitments or has contributed tonight. If you don't know, the Ferndale Community Foundation provides grants to local nonprofits. I'm currently the chair. Mayor Coulter sits on the, on the foundation, and Councilman Pollocka is our treasurer, which is why he kept the check. And it's, it's just a really great organization and, and nice to get the recognition and unexpected, you know, gifts like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Leaks May?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Councilman Pollocka?
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Mayor Portem, piano?
Tomorrow at 7:30 a.m., just 10-plus hours from now, is the final Save My City community presentation between five communities, Berkeley, Ferndale, Hazel Park, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, and Pleasant Ridge. If you're a business owner or a resident who is interested in learning about the state of a disinvestment of cities at the state level, come and learn what's going on and some ideas about how to make it better for communities. So, hope to see you there. I'll be there.
And we're just there?
Oh, yeah. Starting to get loopy. It's 7:30 to 8:30 tomorrow at the Rust Belt Market.
A.M.
A.M. 10 hours.
Also, just a, Huntington Woods was generous enough to tape the, one of the sessions that we had last week with the residents that we will be posting on our cable station as well, so.
Excellent.
And our new website?
Yes, we can probably do that, too. I think, depends how the video is, we can try that.
Thank you.
I would just say briefly, this Thursday evening is the movies on Vester, so the outdoor movie, which one is it this week?
Ghostbusters.
Ghostbusters is on Vester this, this Thursday evening, so bring out the family and go wa, go watch Ghostbusters. Other than that, I have nothing else, and we're not adjourned. Putting that down.
I would like to move, we go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCL 15.268H report.
It's been moved by Martin and supported by Pollocka. Discussion. Can't be longer than 30 minutes. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember's Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. We are in closed session. We'll reconvene in five minutes.
Seriously, I will survive. That's perfect CPR song.
Total info daily.